I'm here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Councilmember Ty.
Here.
Mayor Potem Herrera.
Here.
Mayor Lo.
Here.
Next is planning commissioner. Commissioner Barless.
Yes.
Commissioner Dorago.
Here.
Commissioner Malky.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lo.
Here.
And Vice Chair-- excuse me, Chairman Lo.
President.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is the general plan update and the selection of a preferred alternative land use plan. I'm going to turn that over to you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Lo, council and planning commissioners. Community development director Greg Goodman will start off the staff presentation for you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman.
And thank you, Mayor Lo, members of the city council, members of the planning commission. As stated in the staff report, we are in phase two of the general plan update, which is titled Options and Strategies in the General Plan Scope of Work. This joint meeting of the planning commission and city council is intended to mark the completion of a milestone task, which is the selection of a preferred alternative land use plan. Up on the screen, we have an overview of the discussion this evening, so I will begin with an executive summary of the proceedings for tonight. That would be followed by a presentation in detail of the land use alternatives and the findings associated with those. That would be followed by a presentation of the public outreach and feedback on the alternatives and the efforts to date in that regard. We will then report to you on the GPAC's feedback on the alternatives and what their recommendation to you is for this evening. I will briefly outline the next steps. Then we'll go to any questions, go to public comments, and proceed with a discussion of the materials in your packet. And if all goes well, then we would ask that you select a preferred alternative and give us direction to move forward in the general plan update preparation process. Before I begin, I do want to make a few introductions, so I will start at the far end of the staff table. Paul Herman with Farron Peers is with us. He's our-- he's part of the traffic consulting team. He'll be able to address mobility, transportation-related topics. Next to him is Lance Harris. He will be presenting the financial and fiscal analysis associated with the alternatives that we're presenting to you this evening. Jane Lin is our graphic designer. She's an architect, and she has prepared the conceptual land use plans that illustrate possibilities for how the different alternative sites could potentially build out. Catherine Pan is with Dian Vadia, urban and regional planners. Our new project manager for this general plan update is Rashid Vadia. He is replacing Sophie Martin, who has moved on to other things. We certainly miss her and wish her well, but we are also very fortunate to have Mr. Vadia himself as the project manager going forward in this project. Julia Malley-Lacot is also with Dian Vadia, and she's offered or has provided substantial support in work toward this product that we're embarking on. Grace Lee, as you know, is our senior planner. And David Lu is our public works director. He'll be available to answer any questions. And I guess I'll just finish going down the line. City attorney David DeBerry and your city manager Dan Fox.
Welcome to all of you.
So, the purpose of tonight's topic is the analysis of different land use alternatives and related diagrams, and how they fit into the overall process related to development of the city's new general plan. These alternatives represent a range of options that illustrate how the city could grow and change over a timeframe of roughly 20 years. Each of these land use alternatives present different concepts that visualize how the city could grow and how the community's priorities could be realized. Now, from these three alternatives, based on community input, GPAC members' input, and ultimately the planning commission and city council direction, this process will arrive at a preferred land use plan, and that plan will form the basis of the rest of the general plan itself. The general plan is more than just a land use diagram, but the diagram really forms the underpinning or the backbone of the plan upon which many of the policies and other general plan elements will be based. What I'd like to do is walk you through the evolution of the land use concepts that led us to the three alternatives that are being presented to you. Task four of the general plan update kicked off with the presentation to the GPAC on June 15th of 2017 of preliminary concepts for alternatives. And these preliminary concepts included the following town center locations. The first I'm referring to is the Smart and Final Corridor, which is the segment of Diamond Bar Boulevard between Golden Springs and the 60 freeway, and that's where just about all of the new commercial development is occurring at the moment. The second preliminary alternative we looked at was the golf course. We presented the golf course site as a whole without any specific sectoring or partitioning of it, just presenting that location as a possible opportunity site for a future town center. And the third preliminary alternative we looked at was the intersection of Diamond Bar Boulevard and Grand Avenue. And while there was merit to the idea of it, particularly since it's almost literally at the center of town, the GPAC recommended against looking further at this alternative, primarily due to peak hour traffic issues along Grand Avenue, which are going to worsen over the timeframe of this general plan. What we developed as a result of the GPAC's direction back in June of 2017 were these three final alternatives. So, the first alternative, alternative one, is the Sprouts Smart and Final Corridor that I previously described. The next two alternatives are both on different portions of the golf course. So, with still three alternatives to consider, we took the natural dividing line of the golf course, which would be Grand Avenue, and we looked at alternative two as the south of Grand Avenue alternative. And then, alternative three, we looked at the northern portion of the golf course. So, we obviously understand that through the process, there's been a clear preference for alternative one. That's been voiced by the public and by the GPAC in its 91 book on November 30th of 2017. But still, our research compels us to ask that a meaningful dialogue take place in which the merits of alternative two are carefully considered before you make this very important policy decision. So, I do want to walk through some of the key attributes of alternative two and why we are asking that you carefully consider those as we move forward with the deliberations on which preferred alternative should be selected. Starting with land use compatibility, alternative two is unique among the three alternatives in that unlike the other locations where development would be adjacent to residential uses, alternative two is presently far removed from residential development. And dedicating the remaining 125 acres of golf course property to the north side of Grand Avenue for future open space and recreational purposes would preserve the green belt adjacent to the Golden Prados and Racquet Club neighborhoods and retain Diamond Bar's area that's often referred to as our front lawn. Another important factor to consider is the ownership situation. Although the quest to relocate the golf course, or at least provide compensatory acreage is certainly going to be challenging and complex, and that's one of the reasons why these general plans look into a time horizon of usually 20 years into the future to implement. The golf course, though, has the benefit of having only one owner, and that's the county of Los Angeles. In contrast, the build-out of alternative one would require the cooperation of, at least presently, 15 different property owners and/or cooperative agreements. And so, several property owners would also be a likely years-long process to achieve anything meaningful. Next, we should consider the greenfield development opportunities. Alternative one shows the town center within the already established commercial district along Diamond Bar Boulevard north of Golden Springs, and this area encompasses about 33 acres. Given the size of that site, the new town center and its location would likely focus on neighborhood-serving retail and dining uses. Opportunities for regional retail and entertainment uses, as well as new public spaces and parks, would be limited due to the space constraints and the challenge of introducing such uses into that built environment. In contrast, adjacent parkland, there would be more flexibility and opportunities to accommodate a range of regional-serving commercial uses under both alternatives two and three, as well as public spaces and recreational and community facilities. The size of these sites would also permit the inclusion of larger central town square or gathering space amenities, as well as potential community building. And the proximity and visibility to the 57-60 freeway confluence may also support the regional competitiveness of businesses located within either of these town center alternative sites. On financial feasibility, at least based on the conceptual studies prepared by Urban Field Studio, alternatives one and three would require structured parking to accommodate the diversity of spaces desired for a town center, rendering the two sites financially unfeasible without subsidies. However, the alternative two site would not initially require structured parking due to its size and shape, so developing that site is financially feasible to the developer at the outset. Next, we should at least think about the future of the golf course, and that's not necessarily in the city's control, but what the county's future plans might be. Golf courses have been closing nationwide, including within the San Gabriel Valley and in the inland empire, and some plans to develop new ones have been canceled. Given that reality, it may be prudent for Diamond Bar to be proactive in expressing our expectations to the county should they ever consider repurposing the golf course site. So, regardless of which town center alternative is selected, the city may wish to proactively consider long-range planning policies for the eventual repurposing of the golf course, whether entirely for other recreational uses or for a more diversified uses. Also, regardless of which alternative is selected as the preferred alternative, the general plan update should incorporate economic development policies to promote and incentivize the rehabilitation, revitalization, preservation, and long-term viability of all of our commercial properties. So, with that, I will turn the mic over to Rashid Vadia, who will give you a detailed overview of the land use alternatives analysis, and he will be assisted by other specialists in the relative fields to cover key topics.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, members of the city council and planning commission. I'm going to walk through the alternatives in just a little bit more of a detail. Greg has done a pretty good job in giving you a bigger picture overview, and I'm just going to drill down a little bit specifically into what each of the alternatives show. So, first thing, we'll step back. What are these alternatives, and what is a land use diagram? This diagram here and the different colors here show where certain types of development may happen in the future. And these types of development that Greg talked about, for example, the town center are regulated by land use designations. These land use designations are shown by different colors on these maps. These colors establish the range of land uses, such as low-density residential, regional commercial, parks, et cetera, as well as the density and intensity of development. So, density would be for residential uses, for example, housing units per acre. And typically, for non-residential development, and the report goes into that a little bit, we talk in terms of floor area ratio or the intensity of building that can happen on a site. These ultimately, these land use designations in the general plan form the basis for ultimate control of the properties in the zoning ordinance itself. So, this provides a bigger picture, 20-year framework, which ultimately, on an everyday basis, is implemented through the zoning ordinance. That's what these maps show. Also, you know, what is changing in these maps from where Diamond Bar presently is? I think one of the principal changes is that we're looking at reducing new mixed-use land use designations to allow more options for flexibility on specific sites. Currently, everything in Diamond Bar is a single use, so we have either a yellow use for residential, for example, or a red color for commercial uses. These different use mixes may not necessarily mean that we have to require a vertical mix of uses. In other words, each building to have a mix of uses, but these mixes could apply on a bigger properties. If you're a 38th property, if it's a mix of residential and commercial uses, you would get that mix on that site without necessarily having every building be a mixed use. You can have an office building next to a residential building, and we call that a mixed-use development overall. So, we have three categories of mixed uses here that are shown in all three alternates. One is a neighborhood mixed use. This essentially is a medium-density housing with limited supporting commercial uses. This, in all three alternatives, actually, is located at the very northern end of Diamond Bar, at the northern end of Diamond Bar Boulevard, in effect. Then we have the town center mixed use. This is the destination mixed use. This is the town center mixed use. It'll be a draw, a community-wide draw, that can be serving retail, entertainment, hotel, dining kind of uses. There may be housing that may be allowed in these areas. It'll, if there is housing, it'll likely be of a medium density because the primary use will be commercial use. It'll be a dining use, entertainment use. This category would also encompass theaters, you know, other public gathering spaces, plazas, and so on. And while each alternative has a town center, the alternatives differ in where the town center is located. And then, the third category we have is the transit-oriented mixed use. This will be a high-density housing designation primarily. Office and commercial uses would be allowed as a supporting use, and in all alternatives, this is shown in the area near the MetroLink station. One other factor I want to mention is that in these maps, and Greg explained them briefly in front of you, only certain portions of the city are shown in a bright color. The general plan land use map ultimately will have a color on all properties in the city. Here, we are focused on making decisions on sites that we expect to have a change of use or intensity in the future. What those maps do show us, and they tell us, that much of the city, a very vast majority of the city, will not undergo or is not expected to undergo any kind of a change. So, we are talking about change specifically on a few sites in the city. So, let me quickly walk you through those alternates. Alternatives number one has a town center, as Greg said, at Diamond Bar Boulevard and Golden Springs Drive. This is the area where Sprouts currently is. You've had some new development out there as well. And just given the size of the site and the existing uses, many of the commercial uses are likely to be more of a, have more of a neighborhood orientation as opposed to having larger regional-scale attractions in there. In both alternates, as I mentioned to you, there would be a mixed-use neighborhood along the northern portion of Diamond Bar Boulevard, which is in this alternative as well, and transit-oriented housing along near the MetroLink station. Let's look at this in greater detail. So, two is where the town center is, the number two out there. And one is where we anticipate neighborhood mixed use at the very northern end. Sorry, number three is where we anticipate the neighborhood mixed use development to happen. And one is where the MetroLink station is. The MetroLink station is shown in the T color. The T is actually bisected by the circle that you see out there, but it labels it out there showing MetroLink transit-related mixed use neighborhood. So, three and two, three and one are common to all three alternatives. The GPAC directed us that those were, in effect, the appropriate areas for those kinds of development. The variation now you see, you will see, is on the location of the town center. With the town center remaining at two, four, which is the golf course, can remain as is. The golf course would not be impacted by the location of the town center in that area. So, that, in a nutshell, is alternative number one. In two, and we can look at it in the diagram itself, the town center is located in the southern quarter or southern third of the golf course itself. The remaining portion of the golf course can either remain as a smaller golf course, could be a public park or some other kind of a recreational amenity, and that's why it's shown in the green color out there. I also do want to note that the site that we were showing as the town center in alternative number one can remain and continue to function as a commercial center as it currently is. So, this town center would be in addition to the commercial center that we have presently where Sprouts is and Smart and Final is. Now, this town center would obviously have, you know, the visibility from the freeway, direct access from it, and we will talk about the transportation numbers later on, but would lead to lesser impacts as opposed to, for example, the town center had it been located further inward. So, this is alternative number two, in a nutshell. Let's go to number three here. And in three, the town center would be located in the northern portion of the golf course. Now, this purple color here covers the entire area, but I want to point out that the actual town center would occupy only a small portion of this overall area. We do have the water feature in the golf course, and the ravines is the northern half of the site. It will also remain as open space because it slopes down, and Jane actually will show you more detailed videos of these areas. Just because of the whole area's color doesn't mean that the entire area is built up with a buildup use out there. Again, in this alternative, the shopping center that we have along Diamond Bar Boulevard will remain as is, continue to function as is. I think this summarizes the overall presentation on the alternatives themselves, and Jane is going to walk you through in a little bit more of a detail on the urban design concepts within the town centers.
All right. I'm Jane Lin, and I'm in the Urban Field Studio. I'm the urban designer and architect behind the drawings that you see in front of you. I just wanted to let you know that I had a lot of fun doing this, and the ideas that you see in front of you make a bunch of assumptions that I wanted to just let you know that these are one option out of many possible ones, and we're already seeing, especially on this first site, that this is what's happening in reality is somewhat a variable that will change what this will look like anyway. So, what we can think of with these three alternatives are some changes and flexibility amongst them. So, it may be choosing parts of one and maybe not a whole one. So, this first site, I have to say, I did a little pretending, and there are multiple owners, 13, is that right? Yeah, so I ignored their margins, and there are some things here that I want to point out. The reason I did that was because while there is a major spine that is the south Diamond Bar Boulevard, that is a really auto-oriented road that goes through, and what we're trying to do is put in a pedestrian-oriented, Main Street-like strolling retail place, and that can't quite be achieved on that big street. So, the idea would be to create something new that would connect about a quarter mile, which is really a five-minute walk from one end to the other. Now, right now, the development that is starting to come out there is starting to support some of these ideas of at least pushing some of the new retail closer to this big street and forming a stronger street edge, which for an urban designer, that's a really good start. But to make it really wonderful for walking, there needs to be a little bit more thought. So, what this is proposing is more density of stores, and with that, that means that the parking is going to be an issue. So, our solution here was put a lot of the parking in parking structures, and as we weigh the factors of how to deal with these kinds of things, that will really impact our financial feasibility of this project. However, I wanted to make sure that the parking structures are in there so that you can see that this is one way to deal with it. This is an infill site, so there are a lot of buildings that may not change at all, and so we made some assumptions and assumed that the Sprouts wouldn't change, and we made some assumptions and said that the other stores might. And so, what will happen naturally over time may not at all be what this shows, but the idea is that things change over time, and they start to respect a new street, and they start to show circulation in a slightly different way, and reinforce the retail that is already in this location and create something a little bit stronger than what is there. So, for that, that's a very exciting thought for what So for that, that's a very exciting thought for what could happen in the general plan in a couple decades. So over a couple decades, this could all play out. So that, I think, we'll look at the two contrasting ones on the golf course. So here, I didn't have to pretend there's no multiple owners, it's one owner. So what we have is a much more clean slate, if you will. And what we're proposing is, again, a new street grid that is also that big yellow arrow. That's the main street again, this new street with new roads that come off of Golden Springs. And what we have to contend with there is actually a very big, large grade drop. And so you might come down a slope and then it's, it's really, the main street is really more or less in the center of the site. We're showing more of a destination where you can have the town square and a couple really nice streets along the main street. And at this point in time, well, and you'll have hotels as well. Hotels are actually shown in all three alternatives, but here we're really thinking of this as a visitor's place. So here, we're showing one-story retail and only surface parking, but this is sort of an idea for phase one. There's absolutely room for this to grow as far as the space that is the surface parking shown could actually accommodate more structured parking. You could imagine that there's residential on top or office on top of the retail if it was developed. So there's, there's many variables to this one, but this is perhaps one of the, this is an easy way to start with one-story retail lining a main street like this. So, and also with this alternative, we kind of leave the other half of the golf course to be what it wants to be. And so this is really utilizing and mixing the, you can have these new uses on the side and still keep the golf course on the other side. Or you can think of alternative three having the opposite effect where you could keep the golf course on the south side and reconfigure it a little bit. Or you could imagine that this becomes a park. We're only showing a small portion of the entire north side here. So keep that in mind as well. And even though what you see all in white looks like it would all be caving, there's absolutely room for landscaping. And the idea that you could probably keep a lot of those beautiful existing trees, that can also be there. So this being a diagram is trying to show you something very clearly, but you know, there are a lot of beautiful amenities, including the existing lake, including the clubhouse, and a lot of those trees out there that could remain. However, in this option, in order to deal with the parking, we thought that if there was less surface parking, we could have more nature. This is sort of our trade-off there. This one also is a little more ambitious in the retail that's shown. It's a lot more destination with a multiplex theater. And there's also a town square that is right there that is really modeled off of the same. There, it's, it's a lot like the Victoria Gardens Square. So it's a square that's surrounded with retail, it's a great gathering place. And it's a nice walk from the existing lake, where there's your hotel, to that square and then you have your parking resource at the end. Now, this alternative could possibly be done without this parking structure. However, you would have less retail shown because, or you could show more surface parking. So there's, there's sort of this play of what you could show. We wanted to put in the option of putting the parking structure there just so we could show even more open or natural space. And I think that, that was one way to achieve that. With all of these, we're also showing community buildings. And in this particular case, there is a community building that is on a new street that would be directly across from the Sycamore Canyon Park. And that, that would be a nice connection to other public amenities. So there are a lot of different things to consider in these three alternatives and I really encourage you to try to draw out what you like in particular about your discussion. Of course, I just showed you plans, but we didn't go much further than that, but I wanted to show you some examples of what the town center could look like from other local examples. The shops at Chinook Hills is a great example of what, what scale it could be. It may be even, I mean, a one-to-two-story retail commercial area is what you could possibly get at these town centers. And you could absolutely have a nice mix of things like a Victoria Gardens and a really nice main street feel on Village West of Carolina. And we also looked at housing with this, more in the TOD area, but you can imagine it being in the town center areas too. However, these are more examples of what, what the housing could look like, the densities that are shown for the mixed-use TOD areas. And some of these also incorporate commercial uses at the ground floor, so they're, they're absolutely mixed use. However, a lot of the ones we will be showing you really are more mixed use on a formal level, so. And here are, this is, it's really small, but what we did was we looked at each site and tried to fit the housing, the configuration that we expect and the parking to make sure that we could fit them on there and what, what kind of prototype would come out of them. So this is absolutely, again, not exactly how it would be done, but there are prototypes of what housing patterns could look like using the forty dwelling units per acre that would be allowed in the proposal, proposed changes. So moving on that, just to give you a sense of what that scale looks like, this is, this is shown with commercial and housing. So while it looks quite big, it actually shows a mix of uses. And in that case, it can be expressed in many different ways. Some are the aesthetics and the way that their design have a lot to do with how the density is perceived. So I would keep that in mind when you think about the transit-oriented developments.
And, I'm going to be speaking now, just a little bit on that. And before I go to that slide, I'd sort of point out that what Jane showed to you were some ways of accomplishing development on these sites. And the reason we had Jane test these out is to, for us to understand development possibilities and test out feasibility on these sites. The general plan itself will not dictate a specific design, specific layout, or mandate that the parking be structured or not be structured. So when, when you give us direction, we're not looking for you to decide whether the parking should be structured or not. That's a level of detail that'll be hashed out at the project scale itself and that development will come forward before you again. In the general plan, we are laying out a twenty-year-long vision for the area and we are stating that if there were to be a town center, where would that be located? What would the general nature of that be? Is it a pedestrian-oriented destination or not? And the rate of uses that would be out there? And, and for us to then run the traffic forecast with those development yields in mind. And just to touch base on what we understand to be the traffic conditions in the future. We have Fair and Peers, Paul Herman from Fair and Peers, and he's here to answer questions if we have them. They have spent a lot of time actually counting traffic at specific locations, at specific, at specific intersections, and run the SCAG forecasting, Mother Southern California Association of Governments forecasting model to the year 2040 to understand and to communicate to us the transportation consequences of some of the development decisions that we're talking about here. So in the first column is the base year, that's 2016, that's when the traffic counts were conducted. And then there are three columns following that, alternative one, two, and three. And then they also ran traffic numbers on the existing general plan into the future, into 2040, for us to compare all of these five conditions. And in the horizontal, in the rows, there is a daily trip generation. That means how many trips are being generated in the city. And if you scroll across, you can see that the three alternatives have roughly, or actually almost the same number of trips that are being generated, within a thousand or two thousand of each other. They're very, very similar in terms of their overall development assumptions and the number of trips that will be generated. And you can see that compared with the existing conditions, it's a fairly modest seven to eight percent trip, trip generation increase over the next twenty years. When we look at the VNT, VNT is the Vehicle Miles Travel Per Service Population. By service population, we mean the number of jobs that are there in the city plus the residential population. So when you look at it at a VNT per capita, we are actually noticing a decline in that. And that's, even though the overall VNT is increasing a little bit, our population would increase about fifteen percent and the jobs would increase forty to fifty percent. And because of that, the VNT per capita is projected to decrease under each one of these alternatives compared to the existing conditions as well as compared to the current general plan. And that's shown in the last row out there where we see the decrease represented as a four-and-a-half percent decrease or seven-point-four actually in all two compared to, for example, a six-point-eight percent increase in the current general plan. And that's because we have a mix of uses. And we can speak a little bit more in technical terms about that, but we are able to internalize the trips. Many of the same trips that would otherwise travel longer distances are able to remain within the city or travel shorter distances, a shopping trip or a job trip. And for that reason, we're seeing a reduction in the VNT per capita as a result. I'm going to pass it on to Lance to walk us through the economic and fiscal analysis.
Hi, my name is Lance Harris, I'm from Pro forma Advisors. And we had two tasks as regards to what we're talking about today. The first is to take a step back. We looked at the, we created a fiscal impact model to evaluate the alternative land use planning. And what we found in all scenarios or alternatives, that the proposed land use planning yielded a positive fiscal impact ranging from five-point-six to six-point-six million. The other couple key takeaways from the fiscal impact analysis was that the proposed land uses helped diversify the fiscal revenue streams of the city, particularly from the retail perspective. And they also increased the amount of job-generating land uses. Now, the financial analysis refers specifically to an evaluation of the financial, the theoretical financial performance of the six development concepts that Jane spoke about a couple minutes ago. So the three town center and the three TOD projects. So what we did is we looked at those from a financial perspective and found that all the TOD sites were feasible. And the major finding in terms of the town center sites was that the structured parking created a negative land value for those alternatives, largely because the structured parking is very expensive. And again, to reiterate some stuff that Jane was saying is that this is by no means absolute. It's more theoretical in the sense that you're trying to understand the key differences in terms of the different planning programs, but changes to parking ratios, perhaps the redistribution of some of the fiscal benefits could help make up for deficiencies in any of these planets. The other thing that we did look at and it goes to the fiscal impact of it is there were hotel uses as well as retail uses, particularly in regards to those sites two and three that had the freeway adjacency and more of a regional serving retail orientation. The fiscal impacts were much more significant than just with the general plan in its entirety as far as the intensity of those uses. This again goes over the, again, the theoretical residual land value, which really is just a way of saying how much a developer would pay for the land in order to get his or her required profit. The size is different, so these numbers are absolute, but they're relatively similar in terms of the negative yield on one and three and positively on two.
Hi, I'm Anna from GAN, I'm with Diet and Mattia. And I'm just going to go over the, an overview of the public outreach that was conducted for this portion of the planning process. So this phase of public outreach, the purpose of it was to inform community members about the alternatives, about our findings from the evaluation, and also to get information from them on their preferences or other concerns that they might have regarding each alternative. The timing of this phase, it started in, in June, around June fourteenth, and went through November seventeenth, so that's a five-month period of engagement. We used a number of communication and advertising methods to let people know about the planning process that was ongoing, as well as the community workshop and the online survey, which were our two main outreach activities during this time. We also had a few other smaller events, pop-ups and information booths to reach a larger portion of the community. So the things we did, we used newspaper ads, we utilized the lobby monitors and electric signage here, as well as the fire station, fence banners, postcards that we distributed at events, the city counters, project postcards, oh, sorry, that's what I said, project business cards. This is an example of this slide that had some background information about the plan so that people could go to the website and take a look. Our project website has all of our documents, notes from all the meetings, publicly available. We also used the city's social media network, so it was pinned up to the top of Facebook to let people know there's a workshop and survey that they can participate in. We also utilized stakeholder engagement. We reached out to a number of stakeholders, including educational institutions, HOAs, developers, to have them reach out to their networks to advertise these events. We also created a social media toolkit for a number of other partners to kind of get their internet reach as well. There are two direct mailings that we used. One was a newsletter that gave information, an introduction to all three alternatives, as well as a postcard about the survey, and those were mailed to all Diamond Bar addresses. There are also some news releases that were made through local media outlets. So the actual outreach activities included information booths were manned by city staff and those were at events like the concerts in the park and bar-toberfest. And also there were six pop-up booths that were conducted with the help of our outreach staff, Ariano Associates. They went out to markets, to, to high schools, and just tried to engage as many people as possible and let them know these are the alternatives and these are the ways that you can give us your feedback. And then there was the community workshop, which I'll get into in a moment. Table displays, again, at these different events. And then also city staff, as part of their email signature during the time the survey was up, had a link to the survey, so anyone receiving an email from them would have a way to visit that site. So first, I'll talk a little bit about the workshop. It was held on October nineteenth. It was advertised in a number of ways and we had a really great turnout. About a hundred and thirty people showed up. They got a short presentation about the alternatives and then we put them into small groups where they were able to talk amongst themselves without their thoughts on each of the alternatives. So some of the findings, we did hear back from everybody at a report out during the workshop itself. And we also went through the notes that were taken at each table. And so we found a lot of people, most participants, were in favor of alternative one. The reasons were that they wanted to retain the golf courses is and they had some concerns about commercial activity in the city. They wanted to focus on revitalizing an existing commercial area. There were several people at the various tables and a couple of tables that had a preference for alternative two or alternative three, the reason being that these particular sites would offer some more flexibility based on their sizes and their locations in the city and might have some more opportunity for certain civic uses like community centers and so on. So among those, more people preferred alternative two than alternative three due to its location across the street from existing commercial uses, the Target, and also it's farther away from existing residential neighborhoods. from existing residential neighborhood, so would have less of a likelihood of impacting them. Other things that came up at the workshop, people are concerned about traffic congestion. They're also interested in uses like teen, senior sports, recreation centers, community gathering spots. Regional retail competition, oversaturation was a concern, that was expressed a number of times. And also there was a sort of discussion over housing needs, whether there is a need for more housing types for renters, younger generations, lower income folks, versus some people were interested in having no additional housing. The other thing that we did to try to get a read on people's feelings was the surveys, an online survey conducted through a mentor request. So they have a template that sort of makes it easy for us to post some questions. So this is online for a month, October twelfth through November twelfth, and we had it available in English, Korean, and Chinese. Also advertised a number of ways. Altogether, we had about six hundred, well, we had six hundred and eighty responses. Most of those were to the English site, although some people did make use of the Chinese and Korean sites. And in terms of the people who responded, the demographics skewed a bit older and less ethnically diverse, I guess. So key themes from these, traffic still a major concern. There is a reluctance that some people expressed to develop the golf course out of environmental concerns, interested in keeping open space and also the contribution that the golf course makes to the city's character. People did also note that the larger sites and alternatives two and three would offer some more flexibility. Housing also is a divisive issue in the survey, so some people said no more housing, others said we do need a broader range of options. And there was also some interest in some more transit oriented development and alternative transit projects to make it easier to get around. One, I'll just give you a quick summary of the responses, and we did have people rank one through five what they felt for each alternative, so five being the highest ranking. So for alternative one, we did see the largest number of five rankings, so about a hundred ninety-seven. And then for the other two combined, it was actually fairly kind of close, it was like about a hundred twenty-five people split between the two, leaves them a five ranking. So reports on both of these are available online and have been for the past couple months for anyone to take a look at. But that's for anyone in the audience who wants to see some more nuance on those. So the last thing, the G P A C meeting, we had a meeting with the general plan advisory committee at the end of November last year to give them kind of a longer version of this presentation. And they, you know, got the evaluation, they got a chance to hear members of the public speak and asked a bunch of questions of staff and consultants. And so at the end of their meeting, they made our recommendation for alternative one to be the preferred alternative. Other feedback from G P A C members that I wanted to convey, they do want to make sure, even though we do have a focus on the town center right now, that there should be in the policies support for other local retail in the city to ensure their success in the long term. And they, you know, wanted to consider other options for the golf course in case sometime in the future the county decides to discontinue use there, as Greg was discussing earlier. Also, kind of related to this discussion about like parking structure, service parking, to consider potential changes to the parking ratio and improving transit opportunities for the town center in order to work with that feasibility and make it maybe easier to access. And related to just consider traffic impacts that the new town center would have for the community.
It's actually great, it's great to think of the next step, so I can have you do that. So just what's next, we're looking for your direction in terms of a preferred plan. We've been through a pretty systematic process in reaching out to the community, understanding the issues that, for instance, establishing overall principles, looking at background studies, doing technical evaluation, how we've drawn up the order lists, we've had open designers, financial people, transportation planners, look at these. Once we have direction from you on a preferred plan, that'll form a limited basis for drawing with the more detailed policies of the general plan itself, as well as in parallel we'll be doing an environmental impact report. The E I R will look in much, much better detail at many of the environmental topics, including, for example, traffic operations, transportation operations, as well as greenhouse gas emissions and other kinds of things that E I Rs look at. And following that, these documents will be again released for public review and commenting, including all detailed plan elements, and then brought before you as decision makers. Our goal, our hope is that once we have a direction from you, we will have a preferred plan drawn up fairly quickly in the next month or two, and then present that again in the G P A C, at the next G P A C meeting, which is to be scheduled. With that, I'll turn it back to either Greg or Mattia.
Does that represent the presentations up to this point, Mr. Governor?
Yes, Marlo, that includes our presentation, so we're happy to take any questions.
Fantastic, thank you. So I'll open up the questions to members of the city council as well as members from the planning commission. House member Lynn.
First of all, Mr. Mattia, I think in the trips, it's a very good presentation, we appreciate that. I told Marlo that I actually have about thirty questions, but she said that we don't want to conclude a meeting before eleven P M, so we're going to be short.
Same with you.
I have three questions, one for Paul, one for Lance, and one for Catherine. We'll start with Paul here. You know, could we go back to that slide showing the trip generation? You know, this table is different from the table we have in our package. That number is substantially higher, so I want to make sure which one is correct. On page number six, the trip generation is two hundred and fifteen thousand, I hear you show it two thirty-two there. Could you explain that? There's no table number, it's on page number six of the executive summary.
So the numbers presented in the presentation today are the more accurate numbers. We've been going through and adjusting and making provisions after we did notice an error in sort of trip generation numbers that Catherine might have updated. Catherine and I were working on this presentation in December and January, and so if that packet hasn't been updated, it's possible that those trip generation numbers are updated.
Okay, given that, yeah.
So I'm going to piggyback on his question. The numbers in the presentation and the numbers here, we missed it by half. So that's a big mistake. I mean, how does that happen? Help me understand your business.
Sure. So we use the S C A G model, the transportation demand model that estimates trips throughout the entire S C A G region. And what we noticed, partial away back when these numbers have been presented, was that the trip generation numbers coming out of what are called transportation analysis zones are, and analysts noticed that we noticed the trips coming out of the zones and not coming into the zones, which essentially meant we missed half. And so we made a correction, we wanted to give the correct numbers to the record. And so the numbers presented up here are more accurate numbers. As a comparison, though, you'll notice that they are exactly about half, so for alternatives, it still provides a pretty good value.
So my real question is, on your alternative land use, there are twenty-five hundred new joining units. And on the transit oriented area, I counted at five hundred and forty units, new units. So where are those other two thousand units coming from? Did you take, I guess, to follow up that question, where did Tres Comanos play in this whole picture here?
So when you say you counted the units, do you mean in the town sites?
On your side.
Do you mean like the, in those three sites that we had chosen? So those are only, those are a testing that Jane conducted just to show us like what would this type of density look like on a typical site in those areas. So what we are looking at in terms of like the twenty-five hundred housing units, or there was like maybe a thousand overall that we had actually calculated in the stretching that we were using to do the book out calculations, we would be seeing those spread out like throughout that area that's colored in.
So what you're saying is that all twenty-five hundred new multifamily units would be, you assume it would be built by surrounding the Metro Link Station, is that correct?
I don't know that they would all be in that area. So the housing units that we're, that we're showing or that we're showing in these tables in the alternative evaluation, those are citywide. So some of them would take place in the new town centers and the multi, or in mixed use areas, but also there are any areas that are currently designated for residential use throughout the city that haven't been developed yet, those got counted in as well. So we're really looking at that to be throughout.
So my real question for Paul is, we have twenty-five hundred more units, or joining units in the city, and your difference is between twenty-fourty's trip generation and twenty-sixteens, the net difference is eighty-six hundred trips. But for twenty-five hundred units, typically you would generate about twenty-five thousand more trips. So I'm wondering, this traffic calculation, whether it's very, very conservative comes to the level service, or maybe there's an error in there?
The numbers that we're presenting here, again, are directly out of the transportation analysis model, and so typically if I teach a generation, you're going to see, you know, a single family home does generate about ten trips per day, so twenty-five hundred trips is going to generate about twenty-five thousand trips, if you estimate it. However, you know, multifamily trips are going to generate fewer trips than a single family home, as well as some of the internalization between the traffic analysis zones might not be represented in these numbers. And so these numbers are not meant to be used for the actual E I R, these are for comparative purposes between the alternatives. And so I wouldn't focus too much on the raw numbers here, but more it's just a comparative. That's what the purpose of this was, a high level analysis. And so when we actually get into the E I R and we get that in some more detail, we'll make sure to focus on these numbers to make sure that these trips are represented the most accurately possible.
I guess what I suggest is before the final report is produced, perhaps it'd be nice to refine some of the numbers to be a little bit more close to reality, if I may say. Okay, so I have a question for Lance here. You know, the fiscal impact is fine, I agree with you a hundred percent here, but sometimes it would be nice to find out what are the public investment costs in each of the three alternatives. I mean, for instance, that alternative, it might be very good, but it costs three times more for the public investment to do it, it may not be as feasible as we think. So I'm wondering, is part of your chore is to come up with the infrastructure, the public investment, or whatever the investment is self, so we can do a little bit more comparison there?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great point. For the purposes of our analysis, again, since this is a long-term plan and very high level, we didn't get into that minutia of detail. What we did do is look at the land use changes over the long term, and those were supported by our market analysis, but in terms of infrastructure costs and the like, capital investment was not considered in the fiscal analysis. Now for looking at the site specific scenarios, which gets into more of, you know, how do these technologies bear out from a financial perspective in terms of development, some of that was included at, again, a high level, but not, you know, engineered specifically for the various conceptual alternatives.
Okay. Can I just follow up on that, since we have Lance on the phone, on the microphone here? On your fiscal impact analysis, and that's on page forty-two of attachment number two, table number four dash twelve, you have certain expenditures as well as changes to revenue. What are some of your assumptions with respect to the expenditures? And then the follow-up question on that is, does it include, it kind of ties in with your answer, does it include the cost of the financing that's required to build all the infrastructure?
So again, the answer is no specifically to that question. What we did look at, though, certainly is that basically the fiscal model is built on revenues and expenditures in the city. So what we did is we took a historic look at what your city's revenues and costs were, and to the extent that we printed factors for some things and then we modeled other things specifically. The base here, I believe, of the model was, the starting point was just your actuals for twenty fifteen, so they're built in real numbers, and then we took basically the land use changes and their associated impacts on the general fund to quantify the, again, the impact on the general fund specifically. And the main reason again to that is that this is a long-term plan, and what we're really trying to achieve in this analysis is, you know, how do these alternative land uses compare apples to apples against each other? So then if you get into some of the specifics, which are, again, are important in terms of the overall planning, it's more important in terms of the charge to say, well, if all the land uses are going to be changed to public parks, that wouldn't be financially sustainable. I mean, it's maybe what everyone wants, but it wouldn't work from the general fund perspective. And really that is the focal point of the fiscal impact analysis.
So under that example, then the big expenditure, of course, would be the maintenance and all the stuff that goes under there. What are the, in your assumptions here, what are the big categories that you have built in when you arrived at this number?
Well, typically, the larger costs are associated with safety and fire, which is actually booked into your property tax, so it's a little bit, you know, that's, that's in there but not in there in terms of the model. Parks and recreation is a significant expense, and that really showed up in some of the differences between the land uses, because in some of those assumptions, the golf course is being changed or transformed into an active park space. Again, the overall land uses, and in a lot of these cases, they're much more different in terms of the analysis, so it's easier to point out, you know, alternative one versus two versus three, because you've had more multifamily housing, you know, this would happen or that. But really, the planning in this instance was relatively consistent among the alternatives, with the big exception being the potential transformation of the golf course.
So it would be public safety, it would be parks and rep programs, and...
Well, I can add some more. So in order to make some of the site work happen, you have to put in roads and parks and things like that. So again, we're working at a really high level here, but you would expect that the new streets that get put in, any new squares, that kind of stuff will have an impact as well. And if you look amongst the three, they're somewhat comparable, but alternative one would have fewer, you know, there would be less street to build there, so, because it's already built up. And there would probably be some utility impacts as well.
Okay, thank you. House member Lance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a follow-up question on economics at the same time, if you kind of make sense. Okay, so I heard, Lance, I heard you say all alternatives have a positive impact financially, right? So that's good. But I'm having a hard time reconciling that with the chart that was shown on the residual land value. And that, well, wait, hang just a second. So if you look at that chart, it says, you know, because alternatives one and three require structured parking, rendering the two sites financially infeasible without subsidy, okay, I was not subsidy, and yield negative residual land values between, you know, five million and six million respectively. So, you know, this word subsidy is troubling.
Yeah, so let me, actually, maybe take a step back, and Lance, maybe complete the answer. They are showing two entirely different things. The first chart, where everything was positive, looks at the impacts of development on the city's general fund. That's all it does. It assumes if you were to be able to construct the town center... It assumes if you were to be, be able to construct the town center by whatever method, if that were to be built in operation that produces certain taxation revenue to the city, and the city has to make some efforts to maintain the roads, the parks, the streets, the fire calls, the police calls, and so on. So those look at the difference and the implications of this general fund. The second chart where you have an, a resource for land value, looks at the financial feasibility from a private developer's standpoint of building that development. It's not looking at that the city will ultimately in an ongoing basis that a positive contribution to the, and the business city's general fund or not. That's a one-time cost. A developer will be five million dollars in the hole if you ask, were to ask him to build parking structures and do the development, he can't do it. So that's a one-time cost, and that means that if you were to, at a later date, wanting to build a development, then work with the developer, with other art financial tools, and say, well, maybe not everything needs to be structured, maybe we can decrease the parking ratios, ultimately get to a point where we can have a development that's allowed and be feasible. But once that development is operational, that first chart shows on an annual basis what the net positive impact of the city will be. I hopefully I'm clear on that.
No, that's absolutely correct.
So what, what you're saying is that if the development fell from the sky and was there, that they would all have positive impacts, okay? But to get there, one and three, you know, have subsidies of either five or six million dollars.
That's correct.
A one-time subsidy.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ty?
He left, so he loses a microphone. Um, I, I think this is for Diet and Batya. Does it, does it bother anybody else that the responses that we received in, in the surveys don't represent the diversity of the city? I mean, it, it troubles me that if we chose this method of survey and we get that result, that perhaps we should say we chose the wrong method. So if you'd answer my question, number one, does it trouble anybody of the consultants? And number two, that perhaps, is there a different survey method that would be more effective? Because at the end of the day, we could choose a different survey method, and we could come up with the same result, so I'm looking for your professional opinion.
And, and maybe Kevin can add to that. Um, in all of these tools, that whether it's a workshop or an online survey, we have a self-selection bias. In other words, um, people choose to participate or not, and usually it's people who are either more active, more alert, have more time, are paying more attention, or, you know, whatever, and you, you miss out on, you know, the young couple that's pressed for time out there, or the youth that's not looking to be as engaged in civic activities, that's by default, you know, we see that time again. And that's why we try to reach out in many different ways and not just any one way, and that's why we did the workshop, you know, we did an online survey, we also did multiple other pop-up outreach, outreaches, we, you know, we had boot set up in various places to catch people where they are. So we have tried to reach out in many different ways. Yes, there is a more scientific way about it, where you can do, you know, a phone survey or something like that, where you keep calling the same person over and over again until they answer the question. But what we are doing is, we are giving you back feedback in terms of how we receive through a variety of sources. And I think US decision makers need to, you know, decide whether that's adequate feedback or not, or understand that that's coming from, you know, it's more weighted coming from a certain smaller population group. If you do want to, given the information we have, we, we are even going to parse it a little bit more, have we sort of done that, are we able to do that, or?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so there's a survey report, and maybe Julia, uh, she worked on quite a bit, so, um, we can talk about, um, how the, uh, results cross-tabulated, um, throughout the different demographic segments that we were able to find. Um, but like, as Rajiv was saying, um, so there is always a concern with public outreach. Um, is it enough, are we reaching enough people, are we reaching half of the right people? Um, and I think that was a concern that was expressed maybe earlier on in the process, which is why, um, they did put a lot of effort into diversifying the types of outreach that took place during this past phase. Um, so that's why we had, as you say, so many different types of outreach activities going on, um, so that if somebody was missed in the survey, you know, they had a chance to attend the workshop. Or if they couldn't do either of those, they were reached at a pop-up movie outside of, well, at the Starbucks outside of H Mart, um, so that they could write into the city if they were concerned. Um, but also, um, folks who are here, uh, and the audience, perhaps they can come up and give some more of a, uh, background on what maybe they and their neighbors, uh, have opinions on. So, uh, it's, yeah, it's one of those things where if you don't feel it's sufficient, then that is something that you can express, um, but if, um, but given all these different caveats, um, of just the realities of public outreach, um, that you can balance some of these, uh, concerns, uh, in your decision making.
Mayor, excuse me, Councilman Ty asked my question, but I want to follow, no, seriously, I want to follow up though. Your survey, 638, I wouldn't call it random survey, because only people who are interested will, will respond it. The result is not profoundly indifferent, I mean, 3.4 star versus 2.5. If it's five star versus one, I can understand that, you know. So, to me, and so, you know, I, I know one or two things about survey, and that allows my life. To me, the best, better will be just a random telephone survey. Pick a thousand, we have Chinese and Spanish-speaking people get together in one evening and get maybe a thousand samples, and that may give you a little better result. I mean, to me, my opinion is that 638 survey gives a false impression that the people here in Diamond Bar, um, prefer the smart and final area to be an alternative. It may not be because on your workshop, you said some people, they like, uh, alternative two or three, I can't remember, yeah, so, so, uh, but you know, it would be, I mean, the survey is done, so maybe too late to go back and do it again, but, uh, uh, I just want to make that clear here, that that result may not necessarily be a reflection of the, the, the true sentiment of the residents here in Diamond Bar.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Batia?
I just want to add that, you know, um, there was only, people, they both only limited time to a survey, and they were, you know, they're not able to get into the depths of understanding the fiscal indication, the transportation indication as much, it's, you just cannot do it in, in that survey. People go generally by their gut reaction, well, yeah, this is better, or that's not better, and it's truly, I mean, in order for us to do a really good job, you would have to gather with a focus group in our room, literally, up a registered sample, and make them sit there for two hours and make them, you know, understand everything and have a response, it's certainly can be done. What we are finding is that the reasons people are, people are advancing for a certain decision are reasonably consistent, they're saying, I like this because of this reason. So I think it's our job to present to you the rationale as well, in addition to what people are saying, give you all the, all the information, and I think, Julia, could you just add to the nuance we did capturing the survey report, the demographics, if people responded, if you, pretty quickly, not taking up too much time?
Sure. Yeah, just to say that, um, in terms of age, for instance, we said that, um, you know, the demographic coming to be a bit older than what's represented in Diamond Bar, um, if you look at sort of the actual per age group, what's really happening here is that there were, um, very few participants that were 19 and under, and that's pretty typical, I think, that we see across surveys in our line of work. And then in terms of ethnicity, again, um, the, the major variation is that you had a slight representation of the Caucasian or white demographics, and, and underrepresentation of the Asian or Asian-American, so, to provide a...
Yeah, I think those were pretty.
Latino or Hispanic, those that identified as Latino or Hispanic were, that was pretty consistent, as well as mixed.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Chairman Wolf?
So if you recall in our last joint meeting, this was an issue that we talked to Lance about, um, I'm a little surprised that we don't have really any respondents or any respondents from the 19 and under category, because you did do some outreach at the high school. Just seems like, I don't know, maybe there was a better way to approach that. I don't know if that's something that you experienced when you do this kind of other areas. Well, certainly, in a high school environment, in a civics class, I would imagine that there's a pretty simple way to engage your audience.
Yeah, I mean, they have to be, you're absolutely right, I mean, if you're doing age of class activity, you know, in that we would get more of a response, but we would have to proactively go out and seek to do that. If there is something specific you're looking for us to do, specific outreach to a specific population segment, age group, demographic, we are absolutely happy to go out and do that in transportation and stuff, whether it's now or as we formulate more detailed policies, because a lot still remains to be done on the general plan, we haven't written a document yet, so there is still room to do that.
So let me just make a suggestion that might, uh, the, I would imagine that the demographics of the high schools, the two high schools in this community are fairly representative of the demographics of the communities at all. And so perhaps there's an opportunity through a civics class-type exercise that you not only engage the high school students, but perhaps their parents. This is a suggestion.
Uh, Commissioner Wolf?
I think he's adjusting extra credit. I agree, and I remember this concern that we had previously, um, and the idea of using our city social media, our city social media is perhaps not as active, um, as we might have benefited from, but I also was concerned about the idea that most of our question took place before our, we call it the Sprouts Center, but it's Diamond Bar Ranch, that Diamond Bar Ranch Center opened. So the idea of talking about alternative one before alternative one had actually, that particular area had actually opened and been feasible. I've been fortunate enough to spend a lot of time lately at Chipotle, and Coffee Bean and Teale, and Sprouts, and it's very active and busy. And so in your experience, had that area already been developed when the surveys went out, do you think that that might have changed the way that they saw? I know that's a big leap, but when you're talking about a place that's been fairly inactive and vacant as a potential for town center before it has become more active, do you think that changes the perception of that particular alternative? I know that's a big leap to ask.
I would.
Okay.
Commissioner Brodeur?
This is, this is directly on the state, and the golf course, they're becoming... Louder! Oh, okay, bikes work, is it working? All right. The golf course, if the county decided to do something else with it, um, what, what kind of oversight does the city have to what ends up happening with that golf course? Would, do we, do we take part in it? If they decide to close it, what kind of influence do we have over what that golf course would have had?
The, I guess the short answer is, we have a general plan, we have a general plan designation on the golf course site, um, so whatever the current or future general plan designation prescribes for that site, that would have to be what the, uh, the future use of the, of the site would have to, um, be in performance with.
So we have influence over, through our general plan?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, alternative two, has any consideration been given that if we went down the road for alternative one, and then the county decides to do something with the golf course, that we could develop both areas at the same time? Because what I think, excuse me, so I just kind of finished my thought, what I'm thinking is, is, what did we say, we have like 13 different owners in alternative one? What's the incentive to get them together, develop this over the next 20 years, other than possible marketplace competition by having a plan that also included the alternative two, which would then, we would create both at the same time, or pretty close to it? I'm just speculating. So what is the, what is the incentive for that alti, uh, alternative one to even move forward with that many owners?
Okay, I think there, I heard at least a couple of questions there, so let me unpack that a little bit. Um, with the, with the multiple ownership on the site, that, that, that's a challenge that, um, can be addressed through, through incentives. Um, if, if incentives were offered, for example, if, um, if one, if one property owner was able to assemble, uh, other properties through, through purchase or through some cooperative agreements, um, we, we, you may want to entertain, um, development incentives like reducing parking requirements, reducing setbacks, um, allowing greater building heights, um, some more, uh, relaxed regulations, maybe uses that would otherwise require a conditional use permit, perhaps, um, the justification that if you have a larger, um, integrated development site, that those land use impacts that normally call for a CUP can be waived. Though, those are the types of incentives that we can offer, since, since there's not redevelopment and, and the financing incentives that can be offered in that way, um, incentives through, through development, uh, flexibility is, is one way to go about it.
If I could also just quickly add is that, um, the center that we had, you know, with the, with the Chipotle, the Sprouts, and the Spartan Final, it, as, as they continue refurbishing it and building more and more out there, the more difficult it is to turn it into a town center with a walkable destination, it'll continue to be vibrant and other people, I'm not saying it will not be a vibrant commercial center, but to the extent you're looking for a walkable destination that has a range of amenities and entertainment and so on, that's not what that may ultimately emerge to be. And also, it may not have been entirely clear, but the market segments we're dealing with for a new town center and what that center along, um, is, are somewhat different, and Lance, if you could just quickly in a minute, tell us, can they coexist, those two centers? Are they, are they geared to different, uh, economic markets?
Exactly, yeah. The, the, you know, if you have an anchor that's a grocery store based, your market area, it shrinks, because the multiple visitation of going to get groceries, there's usually been a couple lines. Again, the town center is, is a fundamentally different concept, is sometimes called RD, or retail dining entertainment, that has more of a regional focus, has a wider market, and they can certainly coexist and, and not necessarily compete with each other. I mean, all retail can be to a certain extent, but it's a completely different orientation that really, that the driver is to create multiple uses and experiences that extends someone's length of stay, it's walkable, people go linger, they hang out, it's a social experience, it's not going to buy groceries per se, so, yeah, it doesn't totally coexist.
And, and that makes complete sense, and what I'm thinking is, is if we went down the road to, down the path to alternative one, since this area already has a couple anchors, it's going to be very difficult to definitely change, uh, over the course of 20 years into a town center. I think it would be very difficult, and we may put this in our general plan and kind of pursue it, but it may never materialize, and we may want to think of an alternative that we, uh, control or leverage on that, that's why.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. If I, if I can go back to your initial questions, I, I believe, one, one question was, is there some tool or way in which we might be able to put a placeholder on the golf course site should the county's future, um, plans for its, uh, its disposition be, come into play? And if, if we did proceed with alternative one, but, um, we wanted to keep some, um, the fore-foreclosing on any op, option to, uh, to pursue another alternative that may, opportunity that may arise, you might want to consider, uh, placing some overlay type of a designation on the golf course site. So it, it could, uh, prescribe in the general plan that should, um, should the county, um, decide to, uh... So it could prescribe in the general plan that should the county decide to do something else with the golf course site, we could include policies that say any repurposing, any redevelopment of that would be subject to a specific plan that is going to be, is going to have to meet certain planning principles that the city of Diamond Bar would demand for that site, since it's within our borders and we need to have the land use control that oversees how that unfolds. So that's not necessarily designating that site as a town center on the day of general plan adoption, but should circumstances that are currently unforeseen reveal themselves in the future, then we've been proactive and defensive in saying that there would need to be a comprehensive planning process before the county could just unilaterally make it a land use decision on its own.
Exactly. What I'm referring to is Plan B. And by having a Plan B, it kind of leverages the owners of Alternative One to maybe come together before we say, you know, too much time has passed and we pursue something else if the county decides to close that course. I just think we don't want to throw everything on, you know, all our eggs in one basket. I think we have to have an alternative to that.
Kind of follow up on that. You mentioned specific plan versus the general plan designation. Between the two of them, which ones has more power with respect to a third party who wants to do something specific with a parcel of property?
The general plan, I can't think of a better word, trumps any other policy. So, yeah, the general plan is going to be the prevailing document. The general plan would say that if a developer or the owner of any major amount of acreage contemplated something, that development site is so large or is, could potentially have a ripple effect on how it's developed that you want to, instead of placing a static zoning designation, that you require that a very deliberative public process be engaged to carefully plan that site, given its opportunities and constraints.
So say, for example, you, the supervisors are just, have a bunch of money and they're very concerned about homelessness, and they're reaching out to Diamond Bar and says, hey, we have that nice golf course, let's build lots of homes for people who need homes. Now, if they're, if it remained undesignated as a town center, then would they in turn apply for a specific plan to turn that into residence?
Can you repeat the last?
If they, if the plan, if the supervisors had somehow decided to build multifamily homes in that area, could they then apply for a specific plan designation in the, at the golf course to turn that into multi-unit housing?
If it was there...
Without a general plan designation?
In that case, they would have to, I would say, apply with the general plan. Because it's a county property, if they were to intend to establish some other public use, that's a county agency governed use, they would have similar autonomy to what they have now. But if they wanted to sell the property to an affordable housing developer or other developer, then our general plan designation and policies would guide how that would put out.
You've referred over and over that what we're doing here is a land use designation. I just want to clarify that a land use designation does not mean that whatever is being designated is the designated, it's going to be built there. It's just simply a designation, it's like a, just a label that we're putting. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, the designation is going to be, this is maybe an overused term tonight, but it's more of a high-level governing palette or menu of uses that are allowed within that designation. We then go into the zoning designations to be more precise about what uses are permitted or prohibited.
So Greg, if I, if I could just jump in on this, a general plan, you know, it communicates to everybody, including LA County, what the city's intent behind the study. Telegraphs are intent to everybody else. If you leave it the way it is, it says that, well, we anticipate the golf course continuing, and if it does not continue, we don't have our minds made up as to what should be out there or not. If you put a town center out there, it lets people know if the golf course were to go away, that is what we have come to a resolution as to what will happen out there. You can, through a general plan, either proactively seek that to happen, to say work proactively with the LA County to ensure a town center happens, or you can express it as a passive policy, which would say that enable, allow the golf course to continue to function and make sure it continues to function as long as it can economically viable. If it were to turn to some other use, this is in our intent. And you can go as far as you're comfortable going with that. You can say, consider placement of a town center somewhere in this big area and come back to us with a specific proposal, or we are perfectly happy locating it in this place or not. And I think you want to go as far with that as you're comfortable and telegraph as much intent about it as you do want to communicate to your citizens, to a future developer coming in to LA County. A developer comes in onto the site looking for certainty. If there is nothing out there and they know that they have to go through a multi-year process, whether it's a housing or a town center development, it adds to uncertainty, cost, time, and so on, and they have to factor it into the calculations that they make. If you're willing to telegraph the intent to say, this is what we had liked, they may see you to come back. It's not a sort of walk-in approval. At least it telegraphs to them the overall intent and idea and desire behind where that committee stands. And I think you need to make an informed, you know, decision of what you want to do and how far you want to go with that. It's what the general plan is all about. And it's a long-range document, it's a twenty-year document. We may never reach that decision in ten years' time or fifteen years' time, but if we were to reach there, is there something you want to communicate with the plan or not? That's sort of another choice.
Great, thank you. Additional questions from the council and the commissioners? Commissioner Wolf.
Just one comment, really. We just, we just had to develop or invest a significant amount of money at Alternative One site. And so I just wondered, the message, I don't know if we've had conversations with a developer or not at the stat level, but what's the message we're saying as that project is just now completing, that we want something significantly different than what they brought to the table? Just a comment.
Okay. If there are no further questions from the council and the commissioners at this time, I'll open it up for public comments. All right? Okay. If you would like to make a public comment, now is the time to bring your public comment cards up. While we're collecting the rest of the speaker cards, let's take about a seven-minute break and then we'll reconvene, so you can get a drink of water, stretch your legs, take a breath. At this point, this is our public speaking, public comment section. Because this is not a regular city council meeting, we're going to have some different procedures for the public comments tonight. First of all, rather than the, our time limit will be three minutes per speaker tonight. We have a large number of speakers, so we want everybody to have an opportunity to be heard. Secondly, I'll be calling three names. The first name will be the speaker, and the other two, I would ask you to please come up, and then when the first speaker is done, please come up to the podium and speak. That way, tonight being a school night, we can leave here at a reasonable time. Number three, if what you are planning to say and not to take away any of your right to speak, if you are going to repeat the speaker's comments that are just before you, you can just kind of make a note of that and we would understand that. And then finally, when you speak before you actually give us your comments, please indicate whether or not you have been a respondent in any of the previous surveys, either online or in person, or on paper, or at the pop-ups. That way, we have an idea and understand your passion on this. All right? Shall we begin? Madam Clerk, would you be during the time for us? Thank you. Okay, our first speaker is going to be Diego Tamayo, followed by Ms. Douglas Barkan, followed by Amy Harbin. Come on up. Mr. Tamayo, go ahead.
Thank you, City Council and staff, for the opportunity to speak. I would like to bring up the issue of the golf course. The golf course is a very, very treasured piece of land, and it's a designated wildlife station, very, very important for migrating birds, and these birds are on decline. Many of them are now threatened and have legal protections, and their whole fate needs to be considered in this general plan update. There are also four blue line streams on site, and these require mitigation. Remember, the wetlands have one-to-one mitigation when you're going to be developing an area. And the Los Angeles County bird surveyors actually go through there. They've recorded important species like the osprey and white pelicans and eagerts and double-crested cormorants and many. I've also seen all those myself, too, so I support them. And how will the conversion of the golf course be mitigation? You're taking away the land, and how is it going to be replaced? After all, in the general plan packet that was given, Mr. Greg Guman said that the golf courses are on decline anyway, so where will a replacement be found? And I just want to discuss about the comment that was made about the high school survey. I am at Diamond Bar High School, I'm a student there. I was not informed at all about the survey, and I am very, very involved with the clubs and with what's going on, so I am aware and I'm actually rather disappointed that it was not publicized well. And even though they aren't taxpayers or voters at their age right now, they will be living here for years to come, so we need to know what's going on. We need to have better outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tamayo, were you a respondent to any of our previous surveys?
Oh, yes, I responded to the October Community Workshop and to the online surveys, well.
Thank you. Two responses there. Douglas Barkan, come on up.
Good evening, council members and planning commission members. I did respond to the survey, and also I attended previous events and previous GPAC meetings. What I can say is regarding the six hundred and some odd comments that were received or responses that were received from the survey, keep in mind that those were not, they're not really individuals, those could be family members, too, or families, so they represent much more than six hundred people. So with that said, I made previous comments on the record regarding the plan, and I've heard what's been said tonight, I have a little bit of a variation, I'm going to cut this short because I've got, because things were said already. One of the things that I would like to point out that from the GPAC response so far was that they mentioned about Craig Ranch Regional Park in North Las Vegas as an example of a possible vision for, let's say, the golf course, for example, if that was to be modified or developed. That park in North Las Vegas is 170 acres, but it's also square-shaped, not the same shape as we've got here for the golf course, so it'd be very difficult to do something similar to that. And then, so going through that, looking at the possibility of the golf course being used for development, keep in mind that the county does require a replacement golf course. And the area that's been considered, one of the areas, is Trace Hermanos Ranch at the northeastern end, which is off the sixty at Phillips Ranch Road and Chino Hills Parkway, which basically is next to the San Bernardino County line and would better serve Chino Hills and Phillips Ranch more than it would serve Diamond Bar at the expense of Los Angeles County. And moreover, the city of industry owns that property, and it could use it as part of a solar farm and not sell it to Diamond Bar, for example. Also, on the GPAC report, page 10, number four, financial feasibility, I think Alternative Two shows a $12 million positive residual land value. I don't know if that includes the cost of the replacement golf course land, so it may be actually a negative value. And then also, I would suggest that the golf course be excluded from consideration in any of the general plan alternatives, but could be considered for alternative uses in the future should the demand for golf courses continue to decline without rebound. And of course, the wild card in all of this is the city of industry, and whatever they're going to do on both sides of Grand Avenue, so that's to be considered between the 5760 and Barrero Parkway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Amy Harbin, and then after Ms. Harbin will be Jim Hayes, Grace Lim Hayes, and Robert Velazquez.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, commission chair, members of the audience. My name is Amy Harbin. As Mayor Lo said, I'm a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee. I'm an over forty-year resident of Diamond Bar, and I have been employed as a city planner for the city of Balden Park for over twenty-five years. My comments here tonight are twofold. One is to briefly explain my lone no vote at the GPAC meeting recommending Alternative One, and two, to really advocate for consideration of Alternative Two by the planning commission and city council. My no vote without explanation came after a very long twelve-hour workday. You get tired, and I didn't want any of my comments that night to come off snarky, condescending, or flippant, not only towards my fellow GPAC members, but more importantly, members of the public. That said, as a city planner with membership in AICP and working in local government for twenty-plus years, I bring a local government perspective as well as a resident perspective. As a member of the GPAC, I'm tasked with reading mounds of information, attending meetings, listening to public comments, as well as comments from my fellow GPAC members, and ultimately evaluating all of that into a well-thought position in what I feel is good for all segments of the population of the city of Diamond Bar in the long term. I believe that Diamond Bar needs to think long-term and maintain what I consider greater flexibility for future financial sustainability, and I believe that Alternative Two accomplishes that for several reasons. One, the lower portion of the golf course can accommodate a regional serving center with freeway visibility that can entice national credit retail and restaurant tenants. These are sales tax generating uses, and you read that as general fund, which can be used to fund whatever you want for it to pay for. Parks, road improvements, anything. It's not limited as other types of development impact fees, which can only be used for specific uses. The upper portion of the golf course would still be utilized as open space for either active or passive recreational opportunities, and an open space area is actually more sensitive to the adjacent single-family residences as opposed to a commercial or office development. Three, there's only one property owner to negotiate with Three, there's only one property owner to negotiate with, with the golf course, and that's the County of LA, as opposed to multiple property owners in Alternative One. In my personal experience in negotiating with LA County and negotiating with a variety of property owners, I believe it'd be much easier to negotiate, to work with the county, and that individual property owners each have their own individual agenda and typically seem to think when they're negotiating with a public entity that they've won the lottery. Four, I also realize no one wants additional traffic with any type of new development, but a lot of people seem to forget that with any type of new development, be it residential, commercial, industrial, or office, there's new traffic associated with any new development. As I mentioned prior, I think-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harbin, did you answer the surveys?
Probably. I don't remember going back that door.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering if we can give the speaker some kind of sign if he's not finished or something.
Let me have somebody wave. Okay.
Throw it to me.
Look to the way.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, first, did you respond and then go?
No, I didn't.
All right.
My name is Jim Hayes, and I just urge the council to vote for Alternative One and heed the recommendations of the commissions that you put together and the voice of the people that you received so far from that committee, from the surveys. Tonight's consideration of Alternative Two, if you were to consider that, it has significant issues and it needs to be better analyzed. It should not be approved until this analysis is completed, if that's where you're going. To have a truly viable future, the general plan should address the crisis of global warming and the ongoing decline of our air quality. What is the current state of air quality in our region? Have we been meeting our target? What are the air quality measurements for the Alternative Two area? Two, SB 375, known as the Sustainable Communities and Climate Protection Act of 2008, set regional emissions reduction targets for passenger vehicles. The Metropolitan Planning Organization for each region must then develop a sustainable community strategy that integrates transportation, land use, and housing policies to plan for achievement of the emissions target for their region. Alternative One will produce the fewest emissions. Three, do we know if Alternative Two will meet SB 375's requirements to meet regional goals for reducing greenhouse gases? What data supports that it does? Has it accounted for the effect of the loss of the golf course on the air quality and climate? Will the city be assessing the increased city heat from the added parking lot? Alternative One, you already have a parking lot. Alternative Two, tear out green stuff and knock down trees. Four, moreover, recent research from Caltrans prepared by Ronald T. Millam, Executive Director of Fair and Peers, found that widening roads created an induced travel effect of more traffic, not less. So how can the traffic analysis of Alternative Two, which was also prepared by Fair and Peers, claim that the freeway expansion by the future town center in Alternative Two would effectively mitigate concerns about congestion? What criterion methods were used to support this staff traffic forecasting? Five, we would like to know Councilmember Lynn's view of induced travel and of the staff report calculations as owner of a successful travel planning company, K.O.A. Mr. Lynn, in your experience doing work for the City of Industry in Diamond Bar for over the past 10 years, do you agree with Fair and Peers' analysis in tonight's traffic forecast report? Six, furthermore, if the-
Wave, the wave is coming.
Oh, yeah. If the traffic, I have my timer. If the traffic congestion will grow worse, how will the city be able to meet the target sets for reducing greenhouse emissions? Has the analysis of Alternative Two factored this into the report? If not, should this be adjusted for that? Thank you for including these comments in the written public record and providing a written response by February 20th, 2018. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grace Lim Hayes, were you a respondent?
I responded. I've attended several meetings and made the survey. But I am flattered tonight at the staff's recommendation. It seems unbelievable to recommend Alternative Two based on the biased analysis that we're hearing tonight and declaring the incomplete information. At the last meeting on November 30th, several of us, including one of the residents, we also had asked about the cost of acquiring land for the golf course and how the cost to rebuild that. Today, in your financial feasibility section, the report is still not accurate. The cost of acquisition of land for the golf course and rebuilding the golf course is still not factored in. So how is this valid? How can Alternative Two be the most financially feasible plan? The residual land value chart on page 10 appears misleading as well. How is it a valid comparison of the three plans without factoring the cost of the land and rebuilding the golf course? We can't easily verify Alternative Two's calculations. You can argue that the structured parking might actually cost less in the long run. And then pro forma advisors' crisis financial analysis as projections, existing beliefs, inaccurate assumptions potentially, and unanticipated events. That's really promising, right? That does not sound effective. The land assembly section assumes acquisition of parcels in the land of Diamond Bar would be more complex than relocating the golf course, but how have you proven this to be true? Industry has that land right now. Is Industry and City of Industry already negotiating a land exchange? Is there a contingency plan if that does not work out? In 2016, the City of Industry did purchase 400 acres of Boy Scout land to mitigate development in Trace Hermanos. Is Diamond Bar aware of this project, which is subject to CEQA? The land compatibility section is piecemealing, only considering residential proximity in Balden Prados. What about the potential impacts of the Industry Grand Avenue project, the Diamond Bar's proposed Alternative Two or Three? Has there been calculations about the impact of Alternative Two's town center drawing away business from our businesses here in Diamond Bar that exists right now? Public records indicate City of Industry has been cited for litigation and ideology violations. Has Alternative Two site been environmentally analyzed? Has there been greenhouse gas emission studies and estimates to comply with SB 375? Are there staff measures and council members? Presiding in the neighborhoods bordering Trace Hermanos that could benefit from the golf course being built there? If so, will they refuse themselves from voting from Alternative Two? Emissions in the staff report lead me to ask, are there information provided to the council not disclosed to the public? Would the planning department and city council seek to collude into cheap plans not disclosed to the public? It's just strange that this-
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to have Mr. Robert Velazquez. After him will be Christine Johns, Victor Ramirez, and Vinod Kassak. Mr. Velazquez, have you been a respondent before?
Yes, I have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to talk about some of the traffic impacts. The scientific data is unclear whether major highway projects actually produce an economic boost. Congestion itself is a dubious claim when it comes to road expansions. Transportation experts have repeatedly found that building new roads inevitably encourages more people to drive, which in turn negates any congestion savings, a phenomenon known as induced demand or induced travel. Caltrans has outlined key research findings from years of study into induced demand. A report titled "Increasing Highway Capacity Unlikely to Relieve Traffic Congestion" was compiled by UC Davis scholar Susan Handy, and I have that on attachment A. Three main points I do want to highlight on her report. There is a high-quality evidence for induced demand. All the studies reviewed by Handy use time-series data, sophisticated economic techniques, and control for outside variables such as population growth and transit services. More roads, point number two, more roads mean more difficult traffic in both short and long term. Point number three, much of the traffic is brand-new, which that means some cars on the highway are actually taking that route as a new route because the roads have opened up. The significant point is that Caltrans acknowledges induced traffic, travel demands create something of a mission crisis for transportation agencies that spend most of their money on building new roads and peaking driving. 2014 Caltrans assessment conducted by Smart Transportation Initiative specifically cited demand as research finding that yet to filter down into the department's thinking and decision-making as an attachment fee. I do want to just move on forward to Ronald Millam of Transportation Consultant. Fair and Peers has said that Caltrans has recognized the shortcomings of traditional traffic models, and they're namely-
Wave.
All right, thank you. Senate Bills 375 and 743 is updating and broadening that effort, and new guidelines are in the works. I do have a few questions here. Has the city subcontract Peers and Peers applied the new guidelines in the January 30th staff recommendations reports? Are the traffic forecasts cited in Alternatives Two and Three? Also, staff report forecasts-
Mr. Velazquez, thank you so much.
All right. And I would like to have an answer by February 26th. And I'd like to submit-
Thank you, Mr. Johns.
The report along with the attachments. Can I do this too?
Sir?
All right.
Good evening. My name's Christine Johnson. I'm a taxpayer here for 44 years at Diamond Bar, proud of our country living. My comments and questions are for pro forma financial report, cost calculations, and land use alternatives. Why are the financial projections stated in January 30th staff report for land use alternatives considered useful in planning if pro forma advisors issued a full disclaimer for their report? November 14th, 2017, see attached 16. Excerpt, no warranty or representation is made by pro forma advisor that any of our projected values or results contained in this study will actually be achieved. The entire disclaimer is throughout. In summarizing, the full content of a report is based on non-expert speculation. Full disclaimer attached. Did Diamond Bar taxpayers pay the commission for this report? If so, how much did it cost? Missing from the staff and financial report, the projected cost of replacing the converted golf course via using other Diamond Bar open space like Trace Hermanos Ranch or Royal Vista Golf Club. Where are these calculations and why are they missing? Presently, Diamond Bar is suing City of Industry. Would Diamond Bar negotiate with City of Industry to receive a settlement of a portion of Trace Hermanos to serve as a new golf course site? Additionally, what are the financial computations for golf course land exchange, accusations, design, building costs? Bad risk retail decline considering online shopping impacts? Bad risk retail decline considering big box retail? Bad risk consideration of City of Industry Business Center impacts bordering Alternative Two and Three? Economic impacts on the Sprout Center from another alternative town location? Bad risk, city hotel vacancy plight? Why does the city continue to build hotels when we have vacant hotels on site and control the vacation rentals in our housing neighborhoods? What are the existing condition city hotel performance reports? I'd like to have the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, have you been prior respondent?
I certainly have, and I've been to all these meetings lasting till 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you. My name is Victor Ramirez, and I am a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee. First, I want to thank the council for appointing me to that important committee, and it was very educational and very rewarding, and I think the committee's recommendation speaks for itself, so I don't need to repeat the recommendation as a committee member, but I'm here as a concerned citizen, someone who has lived in Diamond Bar nearly 30 years and who loves Diamond Bar. And one of the reasons why I agree with Alternative Number One is because of the many, many citizens who came forward in public testimony just like this and shared with us their experiences, their desires for the future. And what we heard constantly was they wanted us to retain the character of this beautiful town. They wanted us-
Amen.
They want us to invest in existing resources, commercial resources, not develop new resources to the detriment of what we have existing. We also have a very noisy, loud, terrible neighbor, and that neighbor is never going to go away. It's the 6057 Confluence. And one of the most important elements of Diamond Bar is, and the golf course, is what that golf course does to create a natural buffer and calming influence over that freeway. Without that golf course, we lose that. We bring that nasty neighbor closer to us, and that would be a tremendous loss to this community. I also want to point out a couple of things that I take issue and have taken issue with the consultant and staff's findings, and one is with the residual land value. There have been speakers who've described the shortcoming of not including the replacement cost of a golf course, but also the negative cost of developing Alternative One assumes that we're going to have to build a large hulky parking lot, a parking structure, and that's just not the case. The assumption is based on zoning rules probably developed in the 1960s and 70s, which define the ratios of parking to commerce. Those are wrong. The future is changing. There are companies like disruptors like Uber and Lyft and new technology where people will transport in a different way, they won't necessarily have to park, and we should be looking at changing those ratios for zoning.
Thank you. What happened to Mr. Vinod Kassak?
No.
All right, we have Yuen Wong, Greg Fritschel, and Alan Wilson.
Good evening, council members and staff. Thank you for letting me speak.
Are you a respondent, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Last, I've attended the October community workshop as well as responded to the online surveys. So I am currently a high school junior at Diamond Bar High School, and my question, my first question is regarding Mr. Guman, your recommendation to the city council to adopt the land use Alternative Number Two. So if Alternative Two is adopted by the city council, it is likely that the development of the historic Diamond Bar golf course will happen, in which case Trace Hermanos Ranch will be used to replace the golf course land. And also, depending on the exact location on the 720 acres of Trace Hermanos land selected, what happens if there are City of Diamond Bar planning commissioners or city council members presently living next to the Trace Hermanos Ranch? And real estate companies in town assert that if a park or especially a golf course were to be built within 1,000 feet of certain streets, it would raise the property value significantly. So were you aware that commissioners and council members live close to Trace Hermanos? If not, why not? And if so, could the commissioners or council members push for Alternative Two and vote to bypass the GPAC preference of Alternative One? Lastly, what is the situation called and how does the city handle such cases? Additionally, I would like to put on the public record that I've taken this survey distributed to high school students, and I saw it as a manipulative and leading survey. For example, one of the questions asked the students, how much new housing do you want? As opposed to, do you want to see new housing in Diamond Bar? So this leading question virtually forces the students to respond with a certain amount of new housing units they would like to see in the future. Basically, we're putting words into their mouth, even if they believe that new housing is absolutely unnecessary. And although this might seem insignificant, to remind you, leading questions are prohibited during the direct examination of a witness in every US court of laws. So although this is only a survey, the fact that manipulative questions, which will be illegal in court, were used in a survey distributed to high school students makes me question the objectivity and ethics of the surveyors, and I believe that this biased question reflects the lack of credibility of surveys distributed among residents. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you for letting me speak.
Ms. Wong, just to correct you, just to clarify, leading questions are not prohibited in a court of law during a trial. Thank you. Mr. Fritschel?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Greg Fritschel, and I have not, I'm not eligible to complete the surveys that you're referring to because I'm a resident of City Walnut. The reason I'm here is because what we're talking about here has broader impacts on the surrounding communities that we're not talking about, okay? That are going to affect those surrounding communities, okay? And the biggest example is traffic. And I saw an example of that when I drove up here tonight, because I exited the westbound 60 freeway at Grand Avenue, and even though ingress onto southbound Grand Avenue from the westbound 60 is cut off right now, the southbound traffic on Grand Avenue was backed up almost all the way to, I believe that's Baker Parkway up there, which I believe is outside the city limits, okay? And what we're not, when we look at the traffic figures on the table on page 6 of this report, I feel that that graph is actually misleading. It doesn't really tell us very much because we're looking at three alternatives to essentially the same thing. So it stands to reason that the effect on traffic in each of those areas in terms of numbers of vehicles is going to be approximately the same. What won't be the same is the speed of traffic flow, okay? And I've just given you an example of how the traffic flows on Grand Avenue, and we see the same thing on Golden Springs Drive, okay? We're not seeing it yet on Diamond Bar Boulevard, okay? And we have gridlock intersections there. And what happens when you have gridlock intersections? You have idling vehicles. Idling vehicles also increase emissions, as I believe one of our speakers earlier pointed out. Unless everybody goes and does what I did and buy an electric vehicle, that's something we've got to deal with too. So, you know, this is just one of several things about this study that frankly I think is lacking and I think even misleading and frankly flawed. And I personally would recommend that the results of the study be rejected and the new study be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Wilson. Have you been a respondent?
Good evening, ma'am. I'm a member of the city council and a member of the planning commission. My name is Don Wilson. I am a...I'm sorry, what? Oh, I did not respond to the survey, no, because I didn't respond to the survey. One of the surveys was the electronic one that was online. It was too confusing. I didn't get it. I gave up and so forth. I say hard for participation. I've been coming to every single GPAC meeting, and I'm very honored to be part of this process as a member of the public. I've listened to a lot of people in this community. I don't hear a lot of things, but I think the feel of this community is keep the golf court as it is. It is a historical significant for this community. I think the golf court's been here longer than I've been alive, but if we can keep the golf court going for future generations to come, I want us to have something we can be proud of. I don't want any regrets. If we, remember, you heard the phrase, "If they build it, they'll come." We've heard that all the time. We need to look at alternative 1 to build on that and keep building on it. And also, look at our page several, we talk about physical impact. I've always been, I've always been looking into the city finances, and I understand the city finances is very prudent, very considered what they want to do. But if you look at alternative 1, the projected annual expenses is $2.7 million. Alternative 2 is 4.1, and alternative 3 is 4.2. The city council have spent sure for the life share for the seniors of this town, for whatever practical reason they want to do. We need to be a bit more practical with what we want to do with this community. I listen to this community, they people do not want more housing, they want more businesses. We need to concentrate on Diamond Bar Boulevard and Golden Springs. We need to clean up this community and so forth. And the last thing we need is any negotiation with the county on the golf course. I'm sorry, I have a bad sense of the golf course because I live across the street from the golf course. If you were going to impact me, that's my only environmental buffer. What really sad of what happened on City of Industry going into Grand Avenue, they have cut that hill in half. You have contaminated the birds, you have contaminated the animals and so forth. What are you going to do with the golf course? I just want the city council to listen to this community and understand that we want alternative 1 as the basis for economic growth and development of this community. We need to support these businesses. If you build another, let's say you built a business on the golf course, what you can do for businesses on Diamond Bar Boulevard, Grand, to create market targets and Diamond Bar Boulevard, Grand Avenue. Please be very serious, listen to the community, alternative 1. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call up Bobby Lee, Jim Gallagher, and Mario Solis. Mr. Lee, hello. Are you a member? Have you responded?
I attend, I think, all the GPAC meetings.
But not?
I did like a test online survey.
Okay.
I did not respond because of the racist question.
All right, thank you.
And one of the reasons is I did not present an alternative to do nothing. So that's why I...So just a couple of comments here. I thought the outreach methods and efforts were probably one of the better part of this whole process, even though I may disagree with the content of the outreach itself. So I do want to just, from just one resident's perspective, I think there was plenty of opportunity for everybody to respond. So it's similar to voting, right? So you know, you don't count who came out, you guys are still councilmen, so. But it's just, I don't think we need to count after we've given all the opportunity for people to come and speak their words. In terms of the consultants, I do want to just, it seems like people are looking for the answer from individuals here. I think these guys are experts in their area, they're means to the end, so we just need to just make sure that you're gathering data and information to drive the decision, not the answers. I feel like there was some, looking for some definitive answer, which shouldn't be the case. However, having said that, there should be somebody working with them to look at the model, how those models have developed, what are the inputs. So pick on Lance a little bit, I think from one of the meetings, assumption was 90% for the revenue projection for retail centers with 90% occupancy at certain square meters per feet. I mean, is that really reasonable? Is that an assumption across the, you know, how many years? We're going to have probably a downturn in the economy pretty soon. All that stuff needs to be really validated for you guys to have a real number as accurate as possible. So I think that's something to be looking to make sure that people, there's somebody who's working with them to ensure that whatever you get or people get is well thought out as relevant to that. I think it's absolutely 100% clear people want to keep the golf course. I think that some of the presentation, when you look at the slides, like the one bullet, the second bullet, it seems about the same, majority of the people wanting to, you know, go for the alternative 1. It's overwhelming if you actually look at the result and look at the comments. So just make sure if you haven't, make sure you begin to understand the overwhelming response of the community is, not necessarily to alternative 1, I have a little different perspective, is really they don't want to mess with the golf course. So when you present three alternative, two of them has to mess around with the golf course, one of them doesn't. Naturally, if they were, they're only given those three choices, they're going to choose the alternative 1. So the next point is, the next point, which is mainly what I've been saying every single time I come here, is why the focus on Tom Hall Thompson? I'm still lost at the, we spent like 90% of efforts on looking into, I know it's like zoning, whatever, but like this is about building, we want, somebody wants to build something here. And I'm not sure that's the right question. And if you can't answer the question of why you have to choose between all those three alternatives, you shouldn't proceed, you shouldn't proceed to voting to that.
Mr. Gallagher?
Jim Gallagher from Chino Hills. Yes, I participated in the survey online, and I also participated in the workshop at the community center. I was very impressed. In fact, I think this is the most residential input I have ever seen for any general plan. I was part of the General Plan Advisory Committee in Chino Hills in 1993, and also I participated in our amended plan. And I have to say that the residents of Diamond Bar are doing a great job because they're addressing this and they're speaking on it. So the reason I'm here is because we have a shared property. Chino Hills and Diamond Bar are neighbors, as my friend from Walnut mentioned, they're neighbors as well. Nobody's really addressing Tres Hermanos, I think. We have to recognize it's 2,450 acres, 1,750 of it is in Chino Hills, 700 acres is in the City of Diamond Bar. So Chino Hills has the brunt of responsibility, I think, in trying to keep that space open, which is what most of the residents have indicated should be. Both cities have encouraged their residents just to get involved, to get informed. Diamond Bar residents are doing that. Chino Hills residents have been all along, but are starting to wake up. The key thing that both cities want us to look at is industry's solar panels and to be concerned about it. But I'm concerned about something else, the zoning from both cities. Diamond Bar general plan allows for 630 units to be located on Tres Hermanos. I'm not hearing anybody talk about that tonight. Chino Hills general plan calls for a maximum of 675 units. That's a total of 1,305 units, plus commercial that Chino Hills is also recommending. And there's talk now possibly moving the golf course over. Now, most of the workshops that I've attended, I've seen the residents speak out loudly, including the GPAC for alternative 1, which keeps the town center down on Diamond Bar Boulevard, as you know, and it does not advocate for the relocation of the golf course, which is a possibility under the other alternatives. I don't think these people are nimby's. I think we are all concerned about the quality of life. I think we're concerned about fresh air, about preserving a natural habitat that has naturally wetlands and has all kinds of threatened species that exist on it. I think the reason that residents live in Diamond Bar and Chino Hills is we actually do appreciate our open space, and we need to keep it that way. I have one question though before I leave. Lawsuits I know are really critical. What does the City of Diamond Bar, and I'm going to ask my fellow council members over in Chino Hills, what do we think is going to be the outcome if we actually win these lawsuits? Where are we going to go from there? So I don't know if it's winnable or not, but I know there's a lot of ifs, ands, or buts, so I'd like to see that answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hermanos. Mr. Mario Solis, right?
That's correct.
Thank you. After Mr. Solis is John Harbaugh, Paul Sherwood, and Sadie Meyer.
Mayor, council members, staff, always about the mountain plans. I participated in all the general plan events, but I didn't respond to any surveys. I am a proponent of alternative 1, but I'm also going to reiterate what I've said before. I encourage a traffic-neutral general plan. I spend 45 minutes every morning dropping my child off to school just to get from my home to the freeway is 45 minutes. I only work 15 miles away. My entire trip is from 7:15 in the morning until 8:30 in the morning. That is my trip every single day. So those who are looking at the traffic, drive in it every single day. I think we're missing a big opportunity to address traffic in the long term and a big opportunity to address the bottlenecks in certain areas. We are missing this. This is a long-term plan, and it needs to be addressed long term. Question regarding alternative 1, can we integrate the current Sprouts-McDonald's Chipotle developments to help ease with that transition? And are we willing to exercise any sort of domain to ensure completion of the project? Funds are not and should not be a driving force for our community. We are a community that is giving, that we participate through taxpaying, and we just want to make sure that what the population wants, the population gets, because ultimately that's the purpose for us being here. I also want to encourage preventing development of the golf course regardless of the county's decision, and I'll reiterate, no development whatsoever of Tres Hermanos. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Harbaugh.
Hello. When we last talked, it was about Chilera, it was about the football stadium, it was about Supervisor Kanabi not being included in some of the discussions that they had. I think Chilera, is it still alive? Perhaps. I was going to title my whole discussion tonight, "Reparations for Diamond Bar," because we're fifth in the nation in traffic congestion. It's not my figure, that was recently publicized. Some people were concerned about Tres Hermanos, and actually, City of Industry owns more than just Tres Hermanos. They own the Boy Scout Reservation, they own Lower Canyon, they own Little P. I did not know frankly that cow chips were considered glide, but somehow redevelopment agencies with which this money purchased all this through the City of Industry is coming back. There are a lot, a lot of people are talking about bringing Rita Donald back. So we've got that to look forward to. You were asking about the future of Tres Hermanos. Look for Tonner Canyon Expressway coming through because Carbon Canyon is on the ways, it's the only way you can get from Chino Hills to Brea without going through the 60 congestion. And so you, there's something like 15 accidents since the first of the year, just in that area. So I think regardless of what the consensus is tonight, you're going to see that there's going to be more development over which you have not much control. I had a conversation with Kenneth Phan and Pete Chabarm when they were both alive. I don't consider it a dying declaration, but they both told me that the 710 freeway extension is going to be done. No question about it. That didn't happen. Bob Huff was up there, and he said, "Well, I'd like to kind of see it for the, for the public good." He didn't win. He didn't win for being, you know, for the public good, whatever that meant. He's in China, or was in China for this last meeting where I attended to see who is going to be our next congressperson, to replace Ed Royce. At any rate, I'm just here to say that that earth scar over there that the City of Industry is called massive grading, phase 1 and phase 2, at the time he was on council, was supposed to be another buffer zone, and it didn't happen. So I'm concerned tonight about the City of Industry and what they're going to do as it will affect the economy of Diamond Bar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harbaugh. Were you a respondent in any of our surveys, sir? No? Okay, thank you. Hello, Mr. Sherwood.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I think it's great the participation tonight. I witnessed some excellent participation over the meetings that we've had. And I want to talk about the survey and workshops were also created and were designed to encourage community involvement in the general plan process. And I'm a little concerned, and the GPAC relied heavily on the information that we gained, what we got from these surveys and the workshops. And I'm a little concerned that now we're questioning the validity of those results. People spent a lot of their time, committed a lot of their time to give us information, and I think we need to rely on the information that we've got. I know that I have, and I will continue to. One thing I do want to discuss is that in the '95 general plan, it called for five acres of park and recreation land per thousand residents. Currently, we are far behind that target at 1.2 acres of parks and recreation land per thousand. So I would like to submit the concept of if the golf course becomes available, perhaps an alternative land use for it would be parks and sports complex. That would go a long way to serving Diamond Bar residents. It would meet the desire to not get rid of the golf course as green space and would help us meet our goals of park and recreation land that we sorely need to service families and kids in this community. So I would like to, obviously, I'm one of the nine in favor of alternative 1, and I'm in favor of keeping the golf course or at least developing its parks and recreation land if it were ever to become available. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Meyer. After Ms. Meyer, we have Robin Smith, Brian Miall, and Mary Power.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Honorable Council and Staff. My name is Sadie. My name is Sadie Meyer, and I'm an architecture and urban design student and practitioner, particularly interested in people-first architecture and place making. I'm here to support Alternative One as the best approach presented when considering the best practices of place making. Place making, as defined by Project for Public Spaces, a forty-plus-year-old nonprofit organization that has shaped and characterized the place making movement. Place making inspires people to collectively reimagine and reinvent public spaces as the heart of the community. It's a collective process and pays particular attention to the physical, cultural, and social identities of a space. This place making is a new term for old ideas presented by urban design heroes such as Jane Jacobs, William White, and John Yale. And aligned with place making ideas, there has been a people-centered approach with community outreach, as we heard earlier. It resulted in a clear preference to Alternative One and addresses the key factors of place making and people-first design. Again, first and foremost, it reflects public opinion. Two, it would preserve physical entities such as the historic Diamond Bar Golf Course, which has been considered a center for community connection, identity, and even a wildlife habitat waste station. In turn, this also preserves the Tracy Hermanos Ranch, that sets Diamond Bar apart as a biodiversity hotspot unique to this region and increasingly rare nationally and internationally. Alternative One also features a creek water element, which could be a natural place of gathering and unique feature to take advantage of. Again, these natural places make Diamond Bar unique and would ultimately protect these natural spaces, allowing place making to reach beyond the town center. Cultural identities. The town center proposed is already an established commercial district and would focus on neighborhood serving retail dining uses and allow opportunities for a series of small closets and public spaces interspersed with existing and new businesses. For social identities, it provides the opportunity for, quote, "a walking network with alternate street spaces and small squares," mentioned by John Yale in Life Between Buildings. Alternative One seems to be a no-brainer when considering best practices. However, the report prepared by the Community Development Director and Senior Planner strongly favors Alternative Two. Basically, it would remove the historic golf course, require development in the Tracy Hermanos Ranch, and would focus on visibility and proximity to the fifty-seven-sixty freeway. It would be in the middle of a retail island centered over a vast impermeable pavement directly over two blue line streams, as indicated on the RGIS map. The center's focused on automobiles, which is...
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Honorable Council. As you may guess, I am a participant in all the surveys, been to all the meetings, and I don't want to get into it, but I thought the survey was really inadequate, very sad. After reading the staff report and realizing that the recommendation is, you know, Alternative Two, I had mixed feelings because, first of all, I feel like we're getting railroaded into something. But if I'm going to take that staff report at face value, here are some of the things that I noticed. One of the big glaring things was that last time I was here, I asked fear and peers, representative, if they had heard anything about induced travel. That's a big deal. And the consultants we have here do nothing. And then I find out their principal has written a serious scholarly paper about it, which says this: "Current travel forecasting models, both four-step and activity-based, may not fully account for induced travel effects. Model testing is required to measure and verify the level of sensitivity and accuracy. In particular, feedback process that can influence triage generation and long-term population and employment distribution often do not exist." Going on and on and on, his bottom line is, "This is a science that if we have half a brain, we must embrace," because we are facing a very, probably the toughest thing in our history, which is the, you know, boa constrictor of traffic that is strangling our community. And what I want to do is know the truth. I think we all want the right thing. Unless we're so blinded by our own special interest, we can't see what the long-term effect is going to be. And no matter what choice we choose, it's going to be a tough one. The traffic, I'm sure, will filter through up to where Alternative One exists. I get that, okay? But it's going to be concentrated down by the golf course, okay? Especially in view of whatever City of Industry is going to do. And we all know it's probably not going to be a good thing. It's going to be warehouses. By the way, this location is one of the epicenters. It's the fifth most congested goods transit corridor in the United States, okay? That's what everybody's not talking about. It's the truck track. It's not just the cars. And road widening circling causes more traffic. So, we're all in this together, thinking, and I just want us to have some sober thoughts. And finally, budget thing. Okay, Mr. Goodman, please. Could we find out what the project, when it will turn a profit? Will it self-sustain itself in five years? And how is that going to be comporting with the city budget? I think if we did that, we'd be a lot more sustainable and we looked at projects that would pay for themselves in a short period of time. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Welcome. Yeah. I have first of all, let's go off by saying I'm a fear of public speaking. So, I am...
You're not Brian...
Oh, no, I'm not.
Okay, you're Mary...
I want to be. Maybe a little bit of speech. But yeah, I'm Mary Power. I did not do the survey. I felt like the survey was very biased. I am a commercial landowner and a marketing, have a degree in marketing. The fact that there was no alternative or no development, to me, was just, that's why I didn't answer the survey. So, that's basically what I want to say, is I'd like to see no alternatives, because I don't think we need a town center. This is country living, and I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Dybal and John Martin.
My name's Paul Dybal. I'm a resident and have been for over twenty years. And I did participate in the survey and in the October meeting. And in both, I think I expressed a preference for Alternative One. My thinking along those lines were that it was feasible, that it built on existing infrastructure uses, that it would lend itself towards more intensive development. Plus, from a design standpoint, it did allow for place making opportunities and possibly a town square and so on and so forth. However, in light of the discussion that I've heard tonight, I am no longer, I don't think, of that opinion. In particular, I am impressed by the additional analysis and looking at the residual land value analysis. And also, with respect to the golf course, I don't think that it's necessarily going to ultimately be Diamond Bar's decision whether the golf course stays or doesn't stay. And so, therefore, I think this is a long-term plan. This is a general plan, twenty, thirty years of outlook. And so, I think that this plan should take into account, and should not, in a sense, lower our sights to just focusing on Alternative One as the ultimate town center. I think Diamond Bar does need a town center. I'm tired of taking visitors and relatives and my kids and nieces and nephews, they want to go out and go to the movies, to Brea or to Chino Hills, to have a pedestrian-oriented experience with restaurants and a place to congregate and to, you know, have family interaction. So, I think we need a town center. I think we should go for the best town center possible, and I think that is, looking at a regional standpoint rather than neighborhood orientation, so that we could have regionally-oriented uses there. And I think the market is going to continue to increase for that, given population expansion. So, I also think that, so I think the plan, too, would actually be more feasible, particularly when you look at the land value, also the urban design and place making opportunities that exist there, starting with a clean slate, so to speak. Also, that residual land might enable the possibility of some affordable housing and some diversity of housing to go into a town center, because it should have, it should be mixed use, and really, a town center would have some residential uses as well. In that regard, I would like to put in or focus on the need for affordable housing in Diamond Bar so that members of my family, particularly younger members of my family, can continue to live here. And I think that Diamond Bar has commitments to the region in that regard, and those need to be taken into account and adhered to. And...
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you.
Mr. Martin, welcome.
My name is John Martin. I've been Diamond Bar resident for forty-five years now. And I have a couple of things. If number two or three is actually chosen, what will happen to number one? Will it be like the Alpha Beta Center was? I think the answer is yes. It will literally shut down for a long, long period. So, we have to use all the incentives. We need to do the best job that we possibly can. I know your job of working with fifteen property owners is very, very difficult, but I think we have to go that particular route. And then, if the actual golf course does actually close, we would have a great opportunity to use that land for recreation, which is a goal for all of us. And I think it's been said many, many times here that the actual golf course as a green recreational center is a necessity against the City of Industry. So, I think that we have an absolute battle here, that we have to go to Alternative One. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, were you responding to any of our surveys?
The actual surveys, no, but I've been to every, all of the meetings.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that is the last speaker card that I have. Is there anyone in the audience who has not spoken that wants to address? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comments and I will bring it back to the council and commissioners. This is the time for deliberations, further questions, comments, and see where we go from at this point. We have a number of alternatives or a number of results that can result at the end of this discussion. So, feel free to, I think we've had a good discussion so far. Let's continue that. Commissioner Wolf.
I want to respond a little bit to what Mr. Barago brought up, that regardless of what we ultimately choose, should we, because if we do Alternative Two or Alternative Three, there's still an element of the golf course that could still exist. And should we contemplate in our general plan what the community might want to do if at some point the county of Los Angeles chooses to close that golf course? And I just want to, I think we ought to really think about that, because we've heard a lot of testimony this evening that reports that we should continue to leave that as open recreational space. And I would just caution, I agree with that. I agree with the comments that we need the buffer that the golf course provides today, but I would caution that until the state of California gets away from carbon fuels, that's not a great place for our children to be playing up against the fifty-seven-sixty convergence. And I say that because there are health studies that have been done. But I do think that, you know, in a forty-to-fifty-year horizon, California is doing a great job in starting to convert completely over. It's not just California's job. It's a national issue. It has to, there has to be changes at the national level. So, I would just argue that if the county were to close that and then we were to propose that to be park space or recreational space, then we ought to look carefully at health impacts to those that would be using those recreational facilities. If we are, if we moved away from carbon fuel modes of transportation, then I think that's a good point. So, thank you.
May Pro Tem.
I appreciate all the comments made this evening, and as people were talking about how long they've lived in Diamond Bar, I have lived here fifty-two years, and it's changed a lot. There were seven thousand people who lived in Diamond Bar, and then all of you moved into Diamond Bar. While people prefer Alternative One, I would say it's already happening. And so, I don't know that it matters if we designate that as a preferred alternative, because there's a developer that is spending millions of dollars to make it happen now. Alternative One is not a town center. And while some of you said you don't want a town center, I'm sorry, but for years, I have heard from other residents, sixty thousand residents, who want a town center, want somewhere where they can walk around with beautiful trees and pathways and have a cup of coffee or maybe have an ice cream, sit on a front bench. And where is that going to be located? The county of Los Angeles owns the golf course. And should they decide to do away with the golf course for whatever reason, if we don't have any plans in place, then we fall victim to whatever they want to do. And right now, the county supervisors are talking about homeless encampments for all the homeless. So, you have a hundred and seventy acres there, and what if one of them says, "Hey, that's a good spot. Let's put a homeless encampment all throughout there." And the City of Diamond Bar doesn't have any plans for it. It's not in their general plan. So, let's go ahead and do it, because the City of Diamond Bar doesn't care. And so, I would propose that we continue with Alternative One, pushing for that, encouraging that, but like I said, that's happening already. It's not going to die. It's happening already. Those stores are there. They will be there for years. But I would recommend that we also do a designation or a specific plan or an overlay for the golf course, just in case. Just in case the county decides that they no longer want it. And we can even go so far as to designate, on the south end, that's where we will have a walkable community town center. And on the north side, it could be park space and maybe some golf hoods. But I think we should designate the entire so that the board of supervisors doesn't say, "Huh, they only want to build right here. Let's do a homeless encampment over here." So, I think it behooves us to take care of ourselves, to be proactive, and to designate that now. And I would make that motion.
Excuse me. I think I hear speaking there. Public comments are done and we're trying to deliberate, so if you can, I can just ask you to hold your comments, please. Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned that the folks that voted for the town center as Alternative One are not going to get what they think they're going to get. You know, I have heard, not for spending years as Mayor Pro Tem, but I've heard many, many people say they want a restaurant where they can sit down and be waited on, preferably with tablecloths, and they want a theater, and, you know, they want some tire and amenities. Well, if you read the documentation, it says that Alternative One would have neighborhood retail and restaurants. So, I didn't know what that meant, so I asked Mr. Goodman, and this is what it means. Neighborhood retail and restaurants are the types of businesses currently populating the area. In other words, exactly what we have now. Theaters tend to require a wider market, so they wouldn't be considered neighborhood-oriented. So, for those of you that thought, you know, that Alternative One would give you something more upscale, I think that's not correct. So, we need to understand that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ty.
Well, you know, I would say that Councilwoman Lyons is on the right track, that what I hear people saying is... that what I, what I hear people saying is, let's not do that. Let's not designate that for a development of a town center. Nobody's considering development right now. We're not, we're not looking and saying, okay, Sprouts and Ross and all the other retailers, the Charles Company, we're really glad that you made that investment in Diamond Bar, but now we're gonna change it and it's gonna be a town center. We're just looking for something that is a focal point and designating that as, let's approach it. Let's, let's change the layout of, of the roadway. Let's, let's make it more walkable and more bike-friendly. When I, when, and Councilwoman, or Mayor Protem is the only one that's still here that was on the council when I got elected, we did, if you remember, Carol, we did a seminar, not a seminar, but we got together up at the Diamond Bar Center. We had a day where we talked about what we would like to see. It didn't have anything to do with redoing the general plan, but what would we like to see? What was our vision for Diamond Bar? And I shared that I would love to see from Golden Springs to the 57 freeway and from, say, the backside of Mandarin Taste to Diamond Blur flattened and start over. And that's, that's 20 or 30 acres to work with to make it functional. And I think that that's what the Charles Company has in mind as he tries to cobble together the different pieces, the different ownerships. But to have something that, that would be that large and you could start over with would be terrific. That would be something that you, that would be a destination, right? I, I think I heard Mr. Beeble say that I'm tired of taking my friends and family to other cities. And that's to say, okay, we've got, we're gonna commit this much resources and we want you to build a theater. We want you to build a, a high-end restaurant. All we're doing is saying, this is a designation. We think this would make the most sense at alternative one or alternative two. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I don't know that we need to say it's either or. I think that what we, we need to protect ourselves against, and I, I don't know that we're, it could be that we're too late to the party because we're surrounded by so much retail, whether that's Chino Hills, whatever they're gonna do in the city of industry, Brea, Burke Street. But that would be a grand plan. If we can, if we can create something here, if we can have a vision that says, this is where we would like to do something like that. And one of the questions I would have, and I don't, again, it could be for a consultant or it could be for our planning department, is how hard would it be to, if I'm not mistaken, I play the golf course, I don't play it very well, but if I'm not mistaken, on what we're calling the south end, that is hole, holes three through eight. How hard would it be to make those holes part of what is the north side, the north campus, if you will? And then we would have property to work with and do everything that, that we would like to achieve in that place. So we would have the best of both worlds. But I, I don't think, you know, I came here tonight thinking, okay, boy, this would probably be the right alternative. But we'll see what people have to say and, and we'll make the decision. It just, it, I think that after looking at this, considering it, seeing what we want as a community, I don't think it has to be mutually exclusive.
Councilmember Lynn.
This is one of the best public meetings I've attended. I mean, you know, you, you express your opinions and so forth, and I really appreciate it. Yeah, I'm a golfer, not a good one, but I'm a golfer. I think 15 holes is about right. But, but you know, honestly, you know, I play at Diamond Bar Golf Course quite a bit. It's one of the worst golf courses I've ever played. It's so noisy, it's so flat. I mean, you know, and even, you said, oh, we wanna preserve, preserve the open space. Yeah, always open space is only for the person who can pay $59 to enjoy it. If you don't have any money, you cannot enjoy it now. You know, so, so, you know, if I'm not regarding, think about it. If we turn it into an open space, it's free for people to use it. Wouldn't that be better? It still provides a nice barrier from the freeway to your houses, but it's open. It's under golf course, and you can take your kids and grandkids and walk on there, you know? So I, I, I think, this is a long loose side, that tonight we are trying to define and all, one or two alternatives to move forward to environmental assessment. Is that correct? Okay, so in other words, there's one hurdle to jump yet before we find the final conclusion. It doesn't mean that we have to forward one alternative. We can move forward both of them to start a little harder before we decide what to do. Am I correct, Mr. Matia?
We really would, I mean, we can discuss that with staff, but we really, the EIR typically will have a project and define alternative, as opposed to two of them moving forward. Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
You know, I have done a lot of those in my life. Sometimes I have three alternatives moving into EIR, EIS.
We, we certainly can have in the alternative section, we can look at multiple alternatives. But in the project description, you know, itself, you will need one alternative to move forward. But, you know, Greg, I mean, maybe you wanna chime in there.
Sure. We do have general plan designations that are essentially placeholder designations. For example, the Target property had a, a planned development designation on it that essentially prescribed that, that, that area had to be master planned. So it didn't, it didn't specify a specific use. So there are already a few sites that are designated as plant, planning areas that don't, don't specify what the particular menu of uses are, but at least highlights them as, as a planning priority area should a development opportunity occur in the future. So it's kind of a way to, to not go so far as to prescribe what, what designation it would fall under. But should that opportunity arise in the future, then there's policies that mandate that a process be undertaken to define what that future development profile would...
And we would look at, cumulatively, we can look at the worst condition. In other words, the EIR would say that if that were to be a town center, this is the worst environmental transportation condition that it might be, which again, as Greg said, doesn't mean that automatically it's an automatic approval to anyone who comes forward. There would still be requirements for a master planning or a specific planning when discretionary approval by the city council to be in place and subject to further review. But we would as a place holder state that this environmental document looks at the cumulative traffic conditions that result from that. So nobody would say that we're understating the worst environmental banks that could potentially happen. That would be sort of like the correct approach today in my mind, yeah. But you would still leave a discretionary approval from the city council to somebody to come back five, 10 years from now with a more specific plan for the area before you would really give the thumbs up, you know?
I understand that. But the EIR, the EIR is for the entire general plan, not for one specific spot here. As a matter of fact, town center is not even a land use designation. It's a commonly used term. So what we can, what can we do this? We simply just say that we have a smart and final commercial center. We have a plan for that. On top of that, we also have a kind of general plan on the south side of the golf course, like what Council, Mayor Protem, however, mentioned, and then on the north end, plan some kind of open space and sort of use that as a combined proposal to move forward to the EIR.
That's correct. That's perfectly correct. You can do that.
So I'm hearing you saying that alternative two and three be combined to make a big alternative two?
No, I didn't say that. What I'm saying is that whether you like it or not, the smart and final area is a commercial center already. So we're planning for 20 years from now. We wanna have a build-out in that area, right? So we have a build-out plan for that commercial center. But in the same time, you also say that, well, we would like to see what, some kind of commercial center or some center to be considered on the south part of the golf course with north part of the golf course being considered for public use, open space public use.
That's correct. And Varan Peers does their transportation analysis that'll report 20, 40 conditions, you know, long-term, what the traffic and balance of that might be, just in a year.
And then the economy drives it. 20 years from now, there is no, no environment for the golf course to be developed, so be it.
Yeah, and we certainly can also have policies in place there that continue to support the existing golf course use. I don't think we need to necessarily say that we, as a city, are looking for that golf course to move out. I think we need to continue supporting it, that it be vibrant. But at such time, when that use is not on our economic level or the county wants to move it or, or do something else, but then at that time, that what Councilmember Lynn said comes into play.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, let me, before we finalize the motion, let me see if I, we have any comments from the rest of the commissioners or any other comments. Commissioner Mauki.
Thank you, although it's been a while since the movement, so I'll need to remind you here once we get there. In listening to all of the comments tonight, and I'm a public speaking teacher, so I get really excited when people come to meetings and talk. You guys did a great job, thanks for coming out. But I think what we saw tonight was reflective of the minuscule amount of respondents, right? Like our respondents are 1.2, if I'm generous, 1.2% of our population. And more so, what I think it shows is like these opposing forces of what we want and what that comes with, but we don't want that. Like we want school of choice, but we don't want traffic. We want to be able to shop in our city, but we don't want to have to deal with too many people on the streets. Like, and, which is the nature of coolidity, because people, it's not just exclusively the Diamond Bar. And it's like, I keep coming back to what Mr. Hadi Weisley said, which is that the general plan is the idea of like, how do we protect our goals long range? And you said it shows our intent to reduce uncertainty. And I hear people getting very, like, firmly passionate about these alternatives, except that it might not ever happen. And these numbers that our consultants are sort of being dragged through the mud on are these projections of things that we can't really count for. It is to the best of their ability, knowing that these items might not ever be built. We might not ever have companies wanting to come in and do it. Economics, I mean, there's so many things that took, and I was already pointed out with emissions, all, all very important things, that these are difficult things to sort of look at. So I think when we're looking at this, I really want to sort of go with what was recommended with the idea that how do we protect ourselves? Not necessarily how we're absolutely moving forward, but how do we put items in place for this general plan that ensure that however we decide these opposing forces may resolve within our city, that we can do what we need to do once we level out what that means, whether it be through more talks or more input, or more people coming to meetings and tell us what we want. How do we protect what it is that we want as we go forward? So maybe what I'm saying is that can we not necessarily, I know that we're talking about a town center because we've been told we want a town center, we want a town center. Can we talk about just sort of protecting everything and not necessarily moving forward on this item right away? Because that's what we do, right? General plan doesn't mean you move forward. So even if we pick alternative one and protect an idea of golf course if something happens in it, it doesn't mean we do necessarily anything. It's just protection in place for us as a city. Do I understand that correctly?
Let me ask Mr. Fox or Mr. DeBarry to help us with a motion that encompasses what we wanna do.
Thank you very much. Well, it sounds like there may be consensus for alternative one as the preferred land use alternative with the addition of considering placing an overlay on the entire golf course with potential development on the south part and potential open space recreational uses on the north part. I believe that was by Mayor Mozzam Herrera.
Oh, she's never that elegant.
All right, so...
I did not hear a second.
Okay, so that would be your motion. And I think I heard a second over here. Was that your second, Commissioner, Councilmember Lynn?
I was leaving here when she's... Okay, I, I second the motion. I think that sounds, I, I, to me, that motion addresses both the city's desire as well as the concern from the resident.
Okay, very good. Mr., there's any other comments before we take the vote? Okay, I think that, any other final comments? All right, Madam Clerk, why don't you take the vote on the motion that's been made by Mayor Protem and seconded by Councilmember Lynn?
Councilmember Lynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn? Yes. Councilmember Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herrera?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Planning Commissioners? Commissioner Barless?
Yes.
Commissioner Barago?
Aye.
Commissioner Mauki?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ma?
Yes.
And Chairman Wolf?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for attending to...